We're gonna open the work session for Monday, August 25th, 2025, for the EVA project. Sorry, making sure I get our engineer in here. So I gave a brief overview at the last council, maybe a month ago now, on kind of the delays and how we got here. And then McCann provided this report on where we currently are at. And things moving forward, I can read it if counsel would like. Or you can just ask questions, depending on their preference you all have. Could you read them? Yeah. Yeah. So Michelle, the project administrator from McCann wrote this report. This report provides an update on the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Cascade Locks and Mid-Columbia Economic Development District for grant management support related to the Economic Development Administration Electrical Hardening Project, EDA Project Number 07-79-07503. Project funding includes a $2.4 million EDA grant. Progress continues, continues so slowly as the newly assigned EDA project representative works with the city to ensure compliance with the specific award conditions issued by the EDA. The first amendment to the intergovernmental agreement was executed on July 29th, 2025, finalizing McCann's ongoing grant management role. I think that date's wrong, I'm looking at that. Michelle, I think that's supposed to be 23.
But this was the amendment.
The first degree. It says that the EDA-approved amendment. Oh, nevermind, sorry, I'm getting, I'm confusing, excuse me. Excuse me, amendments to the intergovernmental agreement was executed on July 29th, 2025, formalizing McCann's ongoing grant management role. In addition, the EDA approved amendment number two on August 4th, 2025, which extends the project deadline by one year and establishes a revised project end date of January 19th, 2027. The scope of work has been adjusted following the Oregon Department of Transportation reversal on the placement of new electrical lines in its right-of-way. As a result, the city must now secure an easement across privately-owned industrial property. The city's engineering firm, Kern McLeod, has completed a site visit and will prepare the required survey and legal description for the easement agreement. Bid documents are also moving forward. Vantage Point, the project engineering firm, is preparing two sets. The transformer bid package covers procurement of a transformer to upgrade the electrical substation. This package has been submitted to the EDA for approval prior to advertising. The construction bid package covering all the, covering the full scope of electrical hardening project is nearing completion and expected to be finalized by the end of August. Once completed, it will be submitted to the EDA for further review. Anticipated scheduled events for the bid packages, competitive sealed bid announcements sometime in 2025, proposal bid due date and bid opening 30 days following the advertisement, city review and selection, first council meeting after bid opening, notice of intent to award posted for a minimum of seven days, contract execution, and notice to proceed. Can you let the margins, you're waiting in the, waiting for them on Zoom? No, no. Says not join.
He says, it says, waiting for us to start the meeting, I wonder if he's using a, he must be.
Oh, he might be, he might be in the wrong one.
It says, it might show me as someone from Colorado, not on my laptop.
Sorry, guys.
Sorry, Evan.
Yeah, I didn't see them on, and I'm using my inside.
That's yet to be determined.
Oh, you're not there.
I can't see anyone.
On the bottom, it says not joining, so anything? This says there's one, I don't have it. Let me go send invite quick. Technology. Yeah. Sorry, guys.
You don't understand what it is we're discussing on this, I mean, there's not really much in our control.
Yes, we have something that happened.
I mean, this grant was to give data centers, and data centers are no longer wanted by the commission. And so now it's like, the commission promised us millions of dollars.
Exactly.
If we have to fulfill this grant, we're having troubles to fulfill this grant, what are we gonna do?
Okay. We've had a lot of delays and changes and plans. I know, it's like, it's like, that's what they're gonna do, is explain it to us so we're up to date. Yeah. Okay, alright, sorry about that. Second page in your packet is the map. At the bottom of it is the Cascade Lock Substation that we have purchased from BPA. It's got the original transformer in it that is built in 1952, is six megawatts. We'll be replacing and upgrading it with a new 20-megawatt transformer. We'll also be updating the lines crossing the highway. Right now, there are two separate sets of lines. One of them goes directly from BPA's lines to our Pyramid Substation. The other one goes from the Cascade Lock Substation across into our system. Somebody's on there with that. Waiting for Edward, or whoever that is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Once it crosses the highway, it then goes underground through the Dennis Snyder property to the south side of Forest Lane and continues both left and right. We're replacing and upgrading some overhead poles and underground to the east to a vault, which will then, will be up to any developers to extend it from there into. That's the current plan. The issue, I guess more specifically, is we had explored the idea of going around Dennis Snyder's property to the east and then north through ODOT's right-of-way and through Hood Rivers right-of-way. We were given permission from both. ODOT then came back two, three months later, Michelle, and said, nope, we told you that here, we can't have you put any structures in our right-of-way. So we then had to pivot. We looked at the other option of going through our current easement on the west side of Dennis Snyder's property. And with the cost of upgrading the poles, we either have to put in new poles and make them taller to have two distribution lines on there, or underground along the current easement, when it just was not feasible in cost. So undergrounding through this line between buildings was the easiest and cheapest way moving forward, so.
Can you explain the cost difference?
I don't have the number off the top of my head right now, I'd have to look it up. I know, I know our engineer, Ed, who's on the call, might have it, but I don't know it at the moment.
Yeah, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I could definitely go get that. I know we got an estimate and reached out to one of our construction contract partners that we work with a lot. And it was, yeah, definitely the more economical choice. But if those numbers are needed, I could definitely go find those.
Can you just, like, give me a rough, like, a rough difference in cost? Ed, do you remember?
It's been, it's been a couple of months. Let me, I can look through my email while you guys are talking and I'll see if I can find something. I apologize for not knowing that.
Thank you, Ed.
No problem.
Questions? More? So what are we, what are, what? What do you need from us? What is? I'm just giving an update. You guys, yeah, this is where we're at, ask away, I mean. Because this is taking a while. And things have changed. And things have changed. And we were gonna put a pole on ODOT's property, now I just have a hard I understand going underground is better, but I can't imagine it being cheaper. But I don't know. Yeah, it, yeah, it wasn't a huge amount, but it was, it was the cheapest round. Did you have a question, Eric?
I guess, I I kinda wanna know, what's the goal of this project now? Is it just to, so that we don't have to repay the billions of dollars that this grant cost us? Like, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get at, is that at what point in time is this, like, we can't do this, like, it's costing this, I mean, I can't even imagine how much this has cost the city and McCann's time to work with all of these delays and adjustments and changes. And I mean, I am all about the two substations and the ability to transfer back and forth, and that part seems exciting to me, but like, what's the, what's the goal of this project now?
It's the same, resiliency for our system and power out to the port for economic development. That's still the main goal. I mean, yes, there are some sunk costs to it. I mean, we've already bought the substation for $250,000, we've paid the engineers 150, $200,000 in engineering work. McCann's gotten a chunk of money, so there is some sunk cost, for sure. But it's still the same end goal, to have a system to back each other up and get power to the economic, to the port, so they can do their job. Certainly, but the port has changed. We're no longer going after industrial, now we're talking in a campground. I mean, is that really an effective use of a, what, 20-megawatt? For ten facility? Infrastructure, I mean, is that? Unless they switch gears again and do go for a high-use development. No, we'll probably never lose that entire transformer. But power, the power demand in the city is growing. And they'll be able to back each other up. If there's no point having a second transformer that isn't able to process, to handle the load of the city. I mean, I don't think we'll ever get to a point where we're at 40 megawatts to cover both substations, but that's also not the point. We also have it in our IGA with the port. If they bring in a business that's over 10 megawatts, they are required to build their own substation. So they do not take all of our available power. That was updated, I think, at the end of mid, end of '24, somewhere in there? Courtney.
You remind me, we recently purchased a broken transformer, right?
No.
No, we ended up not.
Well, we bought the, the substation, the whole substation from BPA, and the transformer in it is very old and needed repair. And so we're just replacing it, and it wasn't big enough to handle the city's load anyways.
Okay, because I had remembered conversations about well, we were talking about putting money in it to fix it, is that right? Because there was a leak?
Yes, it has some kind of gas leak. It uses, it's an old type that uses gas to help keep it cool, and it had a leak. And so we actually, we bought it and then we took it offline. So we're not actually paying for the gas right now.
And then, so we're just replacing these three poles or keeping the existing power lines on them?
Correct, yes.
And then, is this going to, is there an existing underground through Snyder's property here?
There's not, no. No, it's a little hard to tell, but there is an overhead. There's a substation and then power lines that run west and then cut north across his property. If you look at the orange line at the, the top of the page there on the far left, you can kind of see three very faint lines. That's the power lines running over his property, and they pretty much go a straight line down to the south side of his property.
Is this gonna be a straight shot through the property or are we adding more vaults in there?
It'll be a straight, there'll be a slight bend, but it'll be a straight shot. There won't be any additional vaults.
Right.
Yep, there'll be no vaults in his property.
So it's not gonna affect any additional easements needed or anything like that?
Correct.
Tiffany, are we having any problems with being able to do that on his property? Have we had that discussion?
Oh, yes, we've talked, we had several conversations. He's wanting a little bit of horse trading, but we're working it out, so. But he's fine with the idea. The biggest thing for us, our issue, is between those two buildings, there's personal power lines, water, sewer, gas, I think, so we have to locate all of those. They have a rough idea of where they're at, so we're gonna do a vac truck and kind of vacuum, see what we can find. That'll be, that'll be the most difficult part.
What kind of gas would be there?
Then propane, maybe? I want to say, I mean, there may not be a gas.
Because we don't have North.
Yeah, I mean, he might have natural gas that they ship in, but yeah, it's all private. It's not any of our lines.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else have a question?
So what, what timeline, do we have, do we have a timeline for any of this?
Or we've the cost and expectation. That's part of the issue. Is these awards were, these, the grant was applied in 2019, the awards, the funds awarded in 2021, costs have obviously gone up since 2021. Now that we have this plan refinalized, we're gonna, Ed, we need to talk to you. We're gonna get an updated estimated cost for this work and then resubmit for additional funds from EDA. We're, we're all assuming that the bids are gonna come in more than what's budgeted, so. At least we're preparing for it. Hopefully, they're coming within this fund, the, just over 3 million, but we're not holding our breath, so. All right. The bid for the transformer is in EDA hands, so they need to review it, and then it can go up as soon as they're ready. The bid package for the construction work should be wrapped up by the end of this month, and then over to EDA. Hopefully, out for bid this fall. But should be out this fall with the construction starting in January, or not January, this spring, sorry, this spring. Eric.
I feel horrible, I'm, of all people, I should know this, but EDA is an Oregon entity.
No, it's federal, it's the Federal Economic Development Administration, yeah.
And it is so I guess I'm just gonna ask it, I don't care. Right, so the, the expectations of the administration, how do they affect this grant process?
The current administration?
Yes.
They do not.
Okay.
So that was another part of the delay, is at the beginning of this administration, they literally pulled all of their lawyers off of their projects and reviewed every grant to make sure it wasn't promoting, whatever you wanna call it, DEI, wokeness, whatever you want, whatever it is. But they spent a solid two, three months re-reviewing all of their projects, including ours, and ours was not affected. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, I have a few questions.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to, I forgot about you, Bernard, sorry.
No worries, good evening, everybody. Yeah, so I, I had a few questions that I sent to the city administrator last night. And I'll just go through those if I could. But before I get into that, so what would be helpful for me, for Mr. Jordan, would be what was the original project budget? And then where we are now? I would, do, I assume we have our original project budget when we submitted for this grant? And then, you know, again, where are we now, given some of the things that have happened and the delays and what have you? So I would love to see that, a side-by-side comparison. And then, you know, I guess my general comment is, I'm still very supportive of this project moving forward. I understand the port has shifted its focus to some, you know, downtown economic development and that type of economic, you know, agenda. But the, the, the fact remains that we've got, you know, 200-plus acres of an incredible valuable industrial land in our city that will have future tenants. I can guarantee you, that will come forward at some, at some time. And having the infrastructure, which is what cities do, water, sewer, you know, electric, et cetera, to support that type of, some future industry is what we should be focused on. And the fact that, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a grant, not a loan, is that right, Mr.?
It's actually a mix. The majority, 2.4, is a grant from, 2.4 million is a grant from the EDA. 497,000, just under 500,000 loan from the Oregon Special Public Works Fund, $110,000 donation, if you wanna call it, from the port, and then about 70 grand in city funds.
Okay.
To meet, to meet the 20% match.
Okay, so again, we're, we're putting a small amount of our ratepayers' funds forward, and we're getting, you know, you know, over $2 million, or almost $2 million from a federal agency to improve our infrastructure. That is a bargain that I do not wanna turn away from. So I want us to continue, I hope we'll continue moving this project forward. So, but like I said, you, you know, I'm always interested in on-time, on-budget projects. You know, I know we're not on time, which is another question I wanna ask. So is there, is this, is this funding gonna somehow expire if we don't get this project done?
If we do not meet this new extended deadline.
Which is what?
January 19th of 2027.
Okay. And with our engineer on, on board, is there any reason you think we can't meet that, Mr. Hockaday?
I do not, no.
Okay, great.
That seems quite reasonable.
Okay, excellent. So let me just hop on my email, if I, give me a second here.
Bernard?
Yes.
So we have like eight minutes left of this work session. I don't wanna cut you short on your questions, but if you can refrain from any of them that you've already asked, that counsel could have already reviewed, only for us, time crunch.
Got it, okay, let me just look through these if I could, real quick here.
Yes.
Okay, so regarding the, the undergrounding work, I know that I've been following this on different projects, you know, around the country, and the technology continues to get better and boring. Underground boring is getting more efficient, it's, it's becoming more, you know, effective. And, you know, I asked if we can underground Snyder's properties, why couldn't we underground the interstate? And then, you know, save the, the challenge of putting overhead lines over an interstate. Real quick, Jordan, what is the, the assessment there?
I, not everybody responded as I thought I did, is that by that point, everything for the overcrossing had been approved and engineered, and the only reason we're undergrounding at the Snyder's is because ODOT gave us wrong information. We'd have to go back, re-engineer, re-permit everything with ODOT, which would slow us down even more.
I'm kinda curious to hear Mr. Hockaday's response. What is your thought on underground versus especially covering an interstate? From a cost perspective, would the work be cheaper if we went under the interstate?
No, it would, it would actually be significantly more expensive. I mean, per foot, underground tends to be, I don't know, two to three times as expensive. And you're right that it is getting more efficient and the technology's getting a lot better. But part of that calculus too is, there's gonna be two circuits crossing overhead over the interstate. And to accommodate that, the ampacity that's gonna be on those lines, you would need two conductors per phase. So when you have, you know, six conductors per phase, you know, or three conductors per phase, times two circuits, times two per phase, you're looking at 12 conduits that would need to go under the interstate, and that becomes immensely, you know, expensive, especially when you're boring it. So in this situation, not the best solution, but from a reliability and, you know, kind of long-term integrity standpoint, undergrounding is great, but for this project, I mean, I think the cost would be pretty astronomical compared to what it is for currently.
Thank you, that, that's, that's all, appreciate that. And then, yeah, look, to Councilmember Pruitt's, you know, notes, "I'm very intent on seeing a timeline." You know me, I don't like to be determined in a timeline. And this project should have a timeline, it should always have a timeline, and you adjust off a timeline. So please, I'd like to see staff put that together as soon as possible, so we can monitor this and not get further behind. Let's get this thing done. Okay, that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Eric.
I guess I don't understand, Bernard, we're at the whim of the EDA. But so you want a timeline, but we can't do a timeline because EDA is slow-footing this. Like, I mean, what, what are you, we have the deadline of January 17th, I mean.
January 19th, 2027.
Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to respond to that. Do you, Mayor, is that?
I've got two minutes.
Yeah, so look, any project manager will tell you, you work within the constraints of the project, whether it's outside agencies, internal requirements, et cetera, and you still build a timeline. So we, okay, so EDA is, is a, a unique and possibly problematic partner in this project. Well, then, you, you, you buffer that in, you know? But you always have a timeline, so you can measure progress. Without a timeline, you have no idea how well you're meeting the obligations of this project. You're just floating around, waiting for the next thing to happen. That is not good project management, and that's why I don't, I feel like we need a concrete timeline, given the constraints of the project. That's always a consideration when you're building a timeline.
Thank you, Bernard. Courtney.
I mean, to add on to that, you take your known quantities, you know, you know how long it's gonna take to, to put up these poles and the lines, you know how long it's gonna take to put some underground in. You take those known quantities, and with a, with a good buffer for EDA, and you should be able to build something off of that.
Thank you, agreed.
So I have a question. I don't know if it's to McCann or to you, Jordan. When we go for the more money from the EDA, what's the chances of us getting it, considering our audits and stuff, because I know that plays into these grants, you have to be, Kurt, do you think that's gonna affect us in getting more money?
That I'm aware of, but in the terms, the chance of getting additional funding, what do you think?
It's possibility, there's no guarantees, but you have the new EDA record, and it hasn't completely shot the EDA down.
Okay.
They're, it's a remote possibility.
Okay. Are our chances higher of getting turned down because of our audit situation, or no, or does that?
I would hedge not at this time, because EDA is invested as we are too, to get the project done.
Okay.
So I would, I would, yeah.
All right, and Tiffany.
I just, I just, since we don't have time, but I would like to understand the difference in cost between the undergrounding and the pole, the bigger, the poles at the beginning.
Yeah.
And we don't, obviously, we don't have, because I'm hearing, I'm hearing that it's cost more to underground, I hear it costs less to underground, so that doesn't, it, I'm hearing two different views here. I, I mean, I understand one involves a highway and all of that, I understand that, but why is it, is it cheaper here and not there? And what's the difference in cost, the first question.
All right. So this will end our work session. Thank you, Edward, and is it Michelle?
Michelle.
Thank you. Thanks, Edward, Michelle.
Thanks, y'all have a good one.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Please look forward to it. Any questions, through Jordan, Jordan to me.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You ready? We're, we're ready? All right, let's call order for our regular meeting. Through the collective allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Broke call.
Councilmember Bobby.
Here.
Councilmember Happy.
Here.
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Seager.
Here.
Councilmember Pruitt. Here. Councilmember Island. Here. Mayor Wood.
Here.
All right, additions or amendments to the agenda?
I don't remember.
All right, adoption of the consent agenda.
We can motion to adopt the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the action minutes of July 28th, 2025, and ratification of the bills in the amount of $142,891.43.
So.
Any possession?
No. Pardon? Where are we on C?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I didn't ask, sorry.
Bill's, you got it. I was gonna say, you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and it was, okay, sorry, I'm looking for the wrong.
I was gonna say, didn't you say it's a lie date?
Yes, I did, I was like, what am I, and then at the same time, I'm reading the August minutes, and I'm like, this is saying my mouth, that's weird. Okay, so I will do that again. Approval of the action minutes of August 11th, 2025, ratification of the bills in the amount of $367,65,762.15. seven hundred sixty two dollars and fifteen cents and approval of a special event license for land mass points.
So.
Any discussion?
Sorry.
No discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. All right, the adoption of the consent agenda has passed by the majority.
If I may say thank you Kathy for the bills being in order again. Appreciate that.
All right, appearance of interested citizens to share in a variety perspectives on issues facing our community. Do you have anything? Kathy, Matt?
Oh, um, no, I just.
Oh. Did you tell us?
Jason's got her reasons to adopt, but she wants to speak. Is that okay?
Is that okay? Do, can you grab a form?
It's her first time.
Okay. There is a form over there. Do you, you know what topic on the agenda you wanted to speak on?
Uh, little free library and.
Okay. We'll have you fill out this and then whenever you get right there real quick. Sorry.
Thank you.
Usually when you come in, if you want to speak, you fill out that paper, but all is good. We all learn.
He can, he can postfill it.
Yeah.
Yeah. He can make this statement and then.
Yeah, go ahead and come on up and then you can finish building that out. Let us know your name.
Uh, my name is Jake Ross Bright. Um, I've part of this community for a little over a year now. Uh, you're probably more familiar with my husband, uh, James Bright. What I wanted to say is that I am the steward for the Little Free Libraries here in Cascade Locks. We currently have two of them. I'm going to be opening our third in front of Whiskey Flats. So I always welcome and invite, you know, participation, recommendations and things like that. And I also wanted to introduce myself. I am an applicant for your code enforcement liaison position. And I know that you're very familiar with my partner and my other, um. We're a part of the gorgeous Cascade Locks group, so I'm also a part of it. I'm just kind of a silent part. So I just wanted to say hi to everyone and make sure you knew about the new library opening. And like I said, we always welcome suggestions and participation.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. And then on to special presentations, we have Mid Columbia Community Action Council, Leslie.
And I have Sarah Kellums.
Okay, come on up, Lisa.
I know that you have a full agenda, so we were going to keep this short. I do have my presentation on a phone drag, but I think we already sent that out to you.
Yeah.
This is great. So cool. We won't worry about that then. Well, thank you for having us. I'm Leslie Narimore and I am the new executive director for Mid Columbia Community Action Council. I've been with the agency as interim since February, but then I was appointed to the permanent position as of August first. And prior to that, I was the executive director of Washington Gorge Action Program for seven years. So some of you may know me through that work as well.
And I'm Sarah Kellums. I'm Development and Partnerships Director at MPAC. So I work with on both our grants and individual and community support, as well as with our partnership projects with other organizations. I'm also a Hood River County resident. I live on the west side of Hood River. And I worked with MPAC for the past three years. Prior to that, um, I ran the Hood River Shelter Services Program, which is now under the MPAC umbrella. So we're really excited to, I came here to counsel with our PBS ED, um, two and a half years ago. And I know there's many new faces here, so we're excited to come back and just share about our programs and services so we can better serve Cascade Locks community members.
Thank you.
Yeah, we are your staff number three. Uh, we serve all of Hood River, Wesco and Sherman Counties. And right now we are making an effort to present to every county and every city council or, um, community within our service area, just to make sure that we're staying on top of what's going on and that we continue to meet the needs. So we're gonna jump right into it. Um, I know that you all had a chance to review the slides. And then today I did answer some questions by email. And then, um, once Sarah and I are through, we're happy to answer any more questions that might pop up. So I wanted to jump to the slide, um, about creating a continuum. It's, um, nearer the front. It's right after the mission. And this is a graphic that kind of illustrates how clients come to us and then how they work through our services. And I wanted to point out, it, it starts with emergency shelter, but not all of our clients come to us through emergency shelter, but many of them do. So if that's the route that they enter into our services, either at the seasonal shelter in Hood River or through the Gloria Center when we operationalize the shelter there. The goal, when someone comes into shelter with us, is always going to be that they then find a permanent home. We don't want someone to come in and seek our services and then return to houselessness. So that's what this continuum is illustrating. So many of the people who come in through our shelters will then move on to the annex, which is a transitional shelter. We have, um, almost fifty rooms there where clients can spend up to two years while they stabilize and find more permanent housing. And then from there, they move into that permanent housing placement. And, um, that can work several different ways. We have rapid rehousing. Um, we have permanent supportive housing and then we do work with private landlords to get them stabilized in a new home. And that green, um, dot over on the side there is how we work to keep people out of this continuum. So we do a lot of eviction prevention with clients so that they don't end up needing emergency shelter. Because if someone ends up losing their home, they get evicted. It's much more expensive to get them rehoused than it is to keep them in that, where they were in the first place.
Um, and I would just like to add, so a lot of people have heard about the annex. It's located in the Dells. Um, we did choose that location as a central service for our three county area. And about thirty percent of the people that we serve at the annex, uh, are placed from Hood River County. So really using that as a regional resource, um, to serve our whole service area. Uh, the next page is our, um, community impact highlights from last year. And, and the first one I wanted to share was the top numbers. So we serve seven hundred and sixty nine community members through our utility assistance programs. We have, um, multiple utility programs that help families who are struggling to meet their monthly bills, stay in their homes and also like not have to choose between groceries or keeping the lights on. And we typically have more need for that program than we have available funding. So we typically prioritize elderly and disabled households for our utility assistance. And we have two seasons with that. So we have our cooling, um, assistance that's in the summer and then our heating assistance that's in the winter. And we also have utility assistance that's more on an emergency, um, as needed basis. That's more limited. And then, so you can see that, um, a higher number of people are served through our utilities program. And then just under that seven hundred and thirty one last year served through our housing programs. That included two hundred and eighty people who would have been in that green circle on the previous page who we helped stay in their housing. And then, um, a hundred and seventy one people we helped transition from houselessness into stable housing. Um, I am so excited to see this happening in our community. Um, we're really seeing the power of wraparound services and of our community partnerships. So especially for people who haven't, um, been without housing for a long time. Typically, if we're able to provide those supportive services, we can help them successfully stabilize in housing. And that feels really good to see that happening. We have about a hundred landlord partners right now and we are, um, continually working to expand that. We have a new program called, well, new for our area called RentWell. And it's a, um, renter education program that also comes with additional benefits for landlords who agree to work with, um, community members who've gone through that program. So we did one class of RentWell this spring. That was our first class. And we have two more classes that will be carrying out this fall and winter. If you or, um, any of your contacts in the community are landlords and are interested in learning more about what that partnership can look like, we would love to connect with more landlords. I think all of us know how hard it is to find housing, no matter who you are. And, um, we provide a lot of supports for landlords to consider taking a risk with someone. Uh, I brought a few resources today and one of them, um, that I'll just leave these for anyone who's interested. This is one of our video stories that we've done. And this one focuses on a landlord partnership and what that looks like and how it impacted, um, a young man's life. So, um, I'll pass that around, um, after our conversation.
We're gonna jump a couple of slides ahead and I just briefly wanted to touch base on the Hood River Shelter in our office in Hood River because I figured that's probably what would be most relevant to you all and that you're most familiar with. So we do have an office in Hood River. It's on State Street. It's in the basement of the Columbia Insurance Building. And we have two staff members who work out of there. Any of our services that are available at the Gloria Center or our other locations are also available at the Hood River Office as well. And we provide case management there, um, all of our utilities programs. And then I did want to mention, we do come down a couple of times a year and meet with people for our utilities program here in Cascade Locks. Do you want to talk about the shelter?
Sure. So, um, the Hood River Shelter became a program of MPAC through a merger in the summer of twenty twenty three. And, um, it continues to provide winter warming shelter services. So, um, we operate the Hood River Shelter on Oak Street every winter from about mid-November through mid-March. This year, we received some additional state funding and we're able to extend that into April. And we have twenty four beds at the Hood River Shelter and it's open twenty four hours a day. If you followed that program over time, it used to be a nighttime only program that was run exclusively by volunteers. And it still really reflects that history. We have really strong volunteer involvement in our Hood River Shelter programs. And we now also have same staff who can provide that case management and connections to community resources.
And then as I mentioned earlier, you know, we do have people who come into the shelter and our goal there is to get them stabilized and then get them into housing so that when that seasonal shelter ends, that they aren't going back out onto the streets. Are there any questions about any of it?
I have one question. I've also often wondered, um, because we do, I do see people sometimes in our town that look like they need help. And I've often wondered if there was like a, a bu, a free bus ticket or something you could offer them so they could get to a town that has the resources for them. Um, it would be so nice to be able to have them available. So when we see that in our community, I can just go, oh, I have this bus ticket. Maybe I can go offer it, maybe with a bottle of water or something. Do we have anything like that?
Yeah. So what we do have, we don't have, um, like unlimited transportation vouchers, but we do partner with CAT and Link. So if someone is either going somewhere within the CAT and Link service area or can make a connection, we can help facilitate a, um, transit pass. We have like a special online request form we do, so it's not like in the moment thing. But if you needed to have a supply of a few of those on hand, we have some at our Hood River Office and we could, um, if you wanted to do a follow-up and have some on hand here at the city, we could definitely arrange that.
That would be nice.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be happy to work with you and my, um, team member, Miriam. We could work with you around that.
Yeah. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions so far? Eric. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry Bernard, your turn.
No worries. Thank you. And thanks for the presentation. So just two questions, uh, just cause I'm curious, I, I know homeless is, is a vexing problem with, you know, throughout the country. And I often, it always often comes up in conversation when I mention folks, I'm a council member and working on these public policy issues. And I never really have a good answer, but let's see if I get an answer from you. So if I randomly approached ten people who were homeless in Hood River County in Portland, you name the area. Can you break it out? What percent of that, what number of that ten would be sub, addicted to a substance issue or having a mental health issue? What, what number would be like, you know, they just, they're just lost their job. They had a, a, a medical bill. They literally just kind of down their luck. They have nothing that's preventing them from, you know, being a, you know, a productive, you know, capable person or society. They literally should hit a bad, a, a, a spell of bad luck. You, you see what I'm trying to ask? Can you break that out? Out of every ten folks, what is the, what is the, 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 the demographic or challenge each one's facing? That's my first question.
I don't think that I could give you an exact number because there are so many different situations. I can say that a lot of people who are experiencing houselessness are experiencing other factors that have led to that, particularly around mental health. But I, I can't give you an exact number. I can say that we are seeing a rise in houselessness right now. And a lot of that is directly correlated to the, the rise in rent. So a lot of the people who are becoming newly houseless, it's not because they have mental health issues. It's not because they're addicted to any kind of substance. It's directly related to their rent and the fact that they just simply can't afford it.
Right. And, and you know, it's my understanding that those types of folks, the, the, the efficiency in the path to get them back into housing is a lot easier than someone who's dealing with a mental health issue or, you know, a substance abuse issue. It's not easy. Those guys have a lot more, you know, they've got these issues that we've gotta try to get our arms around before they can be back on their feet and, you know, and, and, and managing their, their lives. So.
I would just, to that, that can be a really big challenge in our area because a lot of those services around substance misuse and around mental health are lacking. We have Center for Living who is doing the best that they can with very limited funding and also having huge issues with not being able to hire workforce. One of the big problems in our area that we see a lot in healthcare is that people are interested in working here. And then they interview, they're like, yep, I want to get the job. And then they look for a house and they can't find anywhere to live. So that is another issue that penalizes into that.
Yeah. And as you may know, I mean, housing is one of, uh, Cascade Locks' top issues and we're very focused on, you know, improving supply. Okay, my second question, and this was, you know, again, just somebody who's trying to, you know, navigate this world we're living in. And, you know, inevitably, you know, whether it visit Portland, Seattle, even Hood River, I will bump into a tent or, or someone who's camping in a public space. And, you know, uh, I always want to say, who can I call to in, connect them to get them out of that tent and that public space? So just for our situation here in Hood River County, if we run into a public encampment on a space that's clearly not owned by that camper, what is the step we should take as a citizen, as a council member, you name it?
So I'll take that question. Um, this is something we've worked with, um, the Hood River Sheriff's Department around pretty extensively. And I'm wondering, I'm not sure if this is already happening here in Cascade Locks or more in the broader county. But, um, I know that the Hood River Sheriff's Office has a process for when people are camping in an area that they can't stay long term. They give them a notification and they, um, so that there's some advanced notice so that people can prepare. And then they provide an info sheet that has some of our resources and contact information. And I just recently worked with our contact at the sheriff's office to update that. And so that's something that if you wanted us, I don't know if the sheriff would be providing that here, if that would be more your local city, um, law enforcement or just city staff, but that's something we could work with you on. And there is also the, like, the legality around, um, where can people go? And so giving them an option of where they can go. Um, we as an agency don't have the ability to, um, force people to move on. Um, but we can share information about our resources and we usually start by, um, creating a connection and providing basic needs supplies to help meet someone's like immediate need, listen to their story, build a connection and then start sharing more about resources. So that's usually our starting point.
Okay, so you probably heard, we, we're, we're looking for a code enforcement officer here in Cascade Locks and hopefully we'll hire somebody soon enough. So would that be a task that we could give that, instead of bothering a sheriff, you know, that we pay those guys a lot of money? Uh, is that reasonable to ask our code enforcement officer if they bump in or a citizen finds one to approach them with that information sheet that you guys just kind of mentioned to address that situation? Is that, what do you think about that?
I think that's ultimately up to you, but we would be happy to provide those resources. And I can say we also. And I can say we also have a staff member who's focused specifically on outreach. So if you know of where people are popping up, tell us and we'll go do outreach. Like, we're happy to do that as well.
Good.
Thank you. That's, that would love to hear that. That's great news. Okay. That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Eric Bernard.
I was gonna say, we see kind of different. Houselessness issues, I think in this town and maybe we have seen in other communities. We see a lot of folks that are either in cars or with RVs. Um, and particularly on Wyatt Road is one area and Frontage Road along the highway, uh, where people seem to. Congregate and I think getting those resources to people, if you have someone to be able to operate, that'd be hopefully well received.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, we're happy to do that.
Will you be a good contact person to work with, with Becky Jordan?
That'd be me.
Okay.
For now, at least.
Yeah.
Is there any other places in town?
Yeah, down the trail, there's a lot of, if you take, started with, like you said, we have several. Tents and things that. It's accumulating.
I think one of my concerns in town is, obviously, we only want to be empathetic, but at the same time, I get concerned where I see people that are smoking cigarettes and they're standing in three foot drive, in a drive rush.
Oh, yeah.
The big fire that they're having out in uh, Matters right now, that was started by a fire, uh, you know, camp, so. Yeah, there's real consequences.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so any of that information, if we really don't have resources, would be greatly received.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm gonna, I'll leave several of my cards as well. Anyone, please feel free to reach out.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Mayor, can I ask one, add one thing?
Everybody's quick.
Yes, I just would like to request that city administrator. Have their number, that outreach number on our website, so any citizen could go, hey, what do I do if I see a homeless camp? You have two options, the sheriff's office or maybe their code enforcement, but definitely uh, MCCAC.
Courtney.
I don't know, and you were supposed to be heard a slideshow, but there are several blank pages with titles.
That was my fault. Those were notes for ourselves for things that will be added along the way as we get more information and then I turned it into a PDF. I'm sorry.
Thank you for the information.
Then I did want to also share, we have a um film that's coming up. It'd be a little bit of a dry for you all, but on Thursday, November sixth. At the Granada in the Dells, we are co-hosting the Phoebe Greater Oregon Behavioral Health, a community free screening of No Place to Grow Old. Which is about the crisis of elders who are experiencing homelessness. And so I want to share this flyer. And and then these are an example, this wouldn't be the like resource that we work with you on to distribute for outreach, but more as like a general, just. Information card in English and Spanish. And I was curious, if could I pass these three things around and if anyone who wants to have one tonight could take one?
Yes.
Nice. Jordan, a question.
Jordan.
Uh, this, um. Camping is, is that a way of ordinance or kind of non-camping?
Um, don't think we have a very good one that really addresses it. It's, it's on the to-do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's. Because it really hasn't become a problem here, it hasn't bubbled to the surface. It's on, it's on the to-do list.
I hear Bernard talking about having ordinance of course of any kind, so we.
Yeah, it is a lot of that stuff is really just outside of our city limits, like Wyatt or out of the tracks. A lot of it's just outside of our limits and really. Not much we can do about it.
Can I get one of those cards? Sorry.
But just having a resource, like being able to hand them something and maybe a bus ticket and say, you can go this way to get. Cause sometimes it's really hot out or sometimes you'll see them in the winter and you know it's fixing the snow and you just want to give them a way to get to resources.
In the winter, we have partnered um, to get people from Cascade Locks to our shelter in Hood River with the Sheriff's Department too as well. So that's also potentially a solution.
Okay. Thank you, ladies, for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Mr. Bennett, can you grab a card for me, please, and put my box?
Yeah, they left a whole stack of stuff for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernard.
I'm not sure that they want to leave all of the years. They would just want us to take one from the market.
Eat them and you think they would go to use. We are happy to leave them all. Otherwise, if you just want a few of them, we'll take some. So you you decide.
I, if you're willing to leave them, I think I'll leave them, so they're out. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, please.
Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate you taking the time to cut the Cascade Locks.
You too.
All right, public hearing.
No public hearings today.
All right, action. I adopt ordinance four six three and then zoning and comprehensive plan maps.
Right, ordinance four six three approves the changing of fifteen tax lots in a mix of commercial, commercial residential or residential to downtown. This will put the majority of the tax lots, tax lots affronting Juana Post Street to the same designation of downtown. The public hearing occurred at the May twelfth council meeting. Ordinance comes in front of council now for a formal reading, approval and adoption. A first reading was originally scheduled for the June ninth council meeting. ODOT asked for the item to be pulled from the agenda for further review and analysis on their end. We oblige, she pulled the item. We have satisfied ODOT's concerns regarding possible trip increases. That may occur if residential land is redeveloped into a business. Uh, please see exhibit A in the ordinance for more details. Attached for review are the updated ordinance, exhibit A, chapter eight of the charter and map of the affected properties. A copy of the ordinance was provided to council and posted at City Hall seven days prior to the reading. Meeting the requirements to read the ordinance entitled only as long as no council member objects. Does any council member object to reading entitled only?
No.
I will read it in total only twice. That will also allow uh, council to pass it in one reading as long as the vote is unanimous. Ordinance number four six three, an ordinance amending the Cascade Locks comprehensive plan map and zoning map for the downtown district. Ordinance number four six three, an ordinance amending the Cascade Locks comprehensive plan map and zoning map for the downtown district. Amanda Ferguson, uh, with the University of Oregon IPRE team is here as well to answer any questions. Uh, she did a lot of the heavy lifting in updating this ordinance and the downtown, uh, or the zoning and comprehensive maps.
Oh, we gotta beat them up in the lab. Man, I moved to adopt ordinance four six three, updating the zoning and comprehensive plan maps.
Let's set up. All right, any discussion?
Go ahead, Tiffany.
I have a question. We have these maps in here. I'm not exactly sure what they are because they're not being on, and I just pictures. You explain what they are.
So they are the affected um. Tax lots being changed uh, from either commercial or commercial residential or just plain residential. If you look at the spreadsheets, uh, the tax lot map, the first column on the left. The last four numbers correlate with the four numbers on the top of the map, on top of each tax lot in the maps.
In the future, can there be explanation like that? So I know if I'm looking up.
You didn't see that tax lot? Yeah, it's a little small. I mean, Bernard.
Thank you, Mayor. So. I, I. If, if Mr. Bennett responded this, I just, I can't find it in this string, in this long string of emails. Uh, but I wanted to ask specifically, so we did our, our first. Uh, hearing after the planning commission did their review. And I wasn't, did we make some changes? Did you have to go back to the planning commission?
No.
Did that happen? Or I I'm not aware of the process there?
The planning commission reviewed it and approved it back on April tenth, I think was the day. Uh, it came to council on the May twelfth uh, for public hearing. That iteration of it had eighteen tax lots, including three of them um, in and part of and around Marine Park. Uh, after discussion, those three were polled and it was updated for just the fifteen lots. Uh, that is, it was set by the first reading on the night. That is when ODOT asked us to pull it. So that's, that's the time.
Okay, but but the planning commission didn't get a second. Review and conversation regarding it now being fifteen lots and the ODOT analysis, is that right?
They did not. There's no need for them to. At this point, the. Planning Commission approved it moving to council and now it's in council's hands. I mean, unless council wants to kick it back down to planning, but there's no need to.
All right, fair enough. And then.
And I was, Bernard, it's just to um, to add a little bit more context, the planning commission actually had. A, a long conversation about the port being part of this and actually was uncomfortable with the port being in it. Although they did decide to vote to move to let the planning, to push it to the city council for their decision. So I think that the planning commission would be in favor with the port not being as part of this zone change.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And then. We had that developer, I forgot the name of the company. Who has visited us and shared some concerns regarding being. Re-zoned to downtown and their development plans. Uh, I, I think they, we, they got linked up with our, with uh, with Amanda. Is it fair to say that they are are comfortable with what's being proposed here and. We still could see them uh, moving forward some development on that property across some city hall?
Yes, the issue that they're mostly concerned about is whether or not cottage clusters. Or detached apartments are allowed as part of the downtown zone. So that is actually something that the city council will be looking at in chapter, as part of the Article Three amendments. Which is coming to you at your next public hearing or whenever it's scheduled for your public hearing. So that's not before us tonight, but that is something that will be coming to you. And presuming that is passed, then they'll be fine.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Sorry, I think Tiffany.
So we're not, uh. I'm sorry, I wasn't fully listening to what Bernard was saying. We're not, that port is not included.
No, right. They pulled that last time. Pulled out the last time.
But there are a few homes.
Yes.
Yes. And have we?
Five.
And have we had discussion with these?
We notified them all of the meetings. They were invited to participate in, in the public hearings.
And.
And all of them actually came to a public meeting that we, um, we invited all of the property owners to. And all of the homeowners and the church both came, all came to that meeting and had a discussion with us.
And can you, I mean, was there any pushback at all?
No, and they were invited to come to council and speak if they did have any problems. They chose not to.
And can I ask, it's my understanding that these single-family dwellings. If they were to have a fire and burn completely down to the ground. Then they do not have the opportunity to rebuild a single-family dwelling. They have to do, uh. Uh, heavy. High-density housing or commercial or the combination. Is that correct?
It is correct that under the downtown zone, a single-family residence would not be approved. But even under their current zoning, a single-family residence is actually already a non-conforming use. So they are already non-conforming uses, which means if they were to burn down, even if you did not do this map change. They would still be under the restriction that within six months they'd have to get a permit or they couldn't rebuild. So it doesn't actually change their status. They are non-conforming uses now and will be under the new code, but it's not changing anything for them or the church.
But are they still under that even though they're not a part of the downtown associ- or downtown area? That's still.
Cause they're, they're, they are zoned medium-density residential, which doesn't allow single-family either.
Okay, okay, um. Courtney, sorry.
So you mentioned, as it says, uh, with the current zoning that they have six months to file an application and they would be able to keep their. Single-family residential, is that?
That's correct. That's, that's a non-conforming statu- statute, and that is not changing, correct?
That's not changing. That was my question.
And Bernard.
Yeah, and just so I'm, I understand kind of planning philosophy. This is considered an upzone, right? Their, their property technically has more value because you can do something greater in value. As a result of this change in zoning, is that right? Miss, yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And that is what ODOT was somewhat worried about, but they were confident with the analysis that we showed that the overall project of this rezoning with all fifteen lots. Shows actually a reduction in the potential traffic over um, long-term. Um, for, at the worst-case scenario, under the current development versus the proposed development. So they're happy with the final product.
Thank you. And Courtney. Um, hearing some of the horror stories about people experiencing fires and having problems getting those uh, new currents within a certain timeline. Is that an easy process for people? Will that be relatively intuitive? Um. Is, is that something that? Like, do we have all of that infrastructure in place where people will be able to go through that process relatively smoothly? Is it a six-month process? I mean.
They don't have to, they don't have to complete the process. They only have to get an application in, in six months. So we should, they should, if it's a single-family home, they shouldn't have, um, I, I believe that that would be. Doable for most people to get an application in within six months. The, the horror stories you hear are lar- are much more about wildfires in which. They have sometimes up to six months before they can even clear out the timber because the federal agencies or the state agencies aren't allowing them back onto their property for safety reasons. So sometimes they're delayed much longer than not even getting back onto their property in order to revisit it and decide what to rebuild. And they're also waiting for insurance from FEMA and things like that. So the national, then natural disasters can make that process much slower. Whereas I don't, I think in this case, it would probably be a house fire. And it would be um, easier for them to meet a six-month timeline to get a new permit in. And hopefully that will not happen regardless.
And is there another timeline after that, that initial application?
Building, well, there, there are timelines that are built within both of the planning code as well as in the building code for applications. So say if you make an application for a building permit, you have a hundred and eighty days. Um, and to get he- to hear back from the city, the city has a certain amount of time to process that building permit. There are timelines that have to be followed, but um, honestly, it can take a couple of years sometimes, but that's not going to be, it's not going to mean that they won't be able to do it. It just. It's if they cannot. There is a process that they will have to go through potentially. I have not heard that Cascade Locks takes that long to issue permits. I expect that a permit could be issued much, much faster than that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Eric, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to piggyback in the sense of natural disasters. There are often len- leniencies to allow you that permitting to extend out.
So we all good, ready to go? All right. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay.
No.
All right, uh, adopting an ordinance four six three, then, and the zoning and comprehensive plan maps has been approved. Except for one nay. Right?
Because it was not unanimous, it will now need to come back for a second reading at the next council.
Okay, okay. So we'll bring it back to the next council. Okay, and moving on, and I just want to mention to council, because we have such a long agenda. If I seem like I'm cutting you guys short, it's because I'm trying to keep us on task here and get done. So it's not trying to be rude or anything. I just want us to be able to get through everything. And moving on to adopt ordinance four six five, the CDC Article One Amendment.
All right, the city of Cascade Locks obtained a technical assistance grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to hire a consultant to assist the city in implementing. Key short-term goals of the Cascade Locks strategic plan, the development of a downtown plan and revision of related aspects of the Cascade Locks Development Code. To be more business-friendly. Cascade Locks contracted the University of Oregon Institute of Policy Research Engagement to develop this plan, which was completed in February twenty twenty five. One of the major goals of the downtown revitalization plan was to develop draft ones which were updating or replacing Cascade Locks Community Development Code. That results in friendly processes and procedures for developers, businesses, residents and city staff. One of the major goals of the downtown, helps our. IPRE staff, staff, city staff and downtown revitalization project steering committee. Have developed proposed amendments to the Cascade Locks Development Code to meet the goals and objectives of the downtown possession plan. This includes an amendment to the building height definition within Article One of the Development Code. This amendment is intended to replace a current illustration with an illustration that better explains the complexities of determining building height on sloped land. The Cascade Locks Plan Commission met on May eighteenth, twenty twenty five to hold a public hearing on proposed ordinance to amend Article One definitions. As noted above, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the revision to Article One to City Council. Council held a public hearing on June twenty third, twenty twenty five and left public comment open until July seventh. No additional comments were received. Attached for review are the ordinance in chapter eight of the charter. A copy of the ordinance was provided to council and posted at City Hall seven days prior to the reading. In meeting, meeting requirements to read the ordinance entitled only. Does any council member object to reading entitled only?
Nope, is it?
Okay, I will also read it uh, twice, read the title twice. Okay, I will also read it, uh, twice, read the title twice, which will then meet criteria in two assets in one reading, assuming a unanimous vote. Ordinance number four, six, five, ordinance amending the community development code, Article One definitions building height. Ordinance number four, six, five, in ordinance amending the community development code, Article One definitions building height. And once again, Amanda Ferguson from the I P R E staff is here to answer any questions.
To make the motion to adopt ordinance number four, six, five, amending the community development code, Article One definitions of building height. Second. All right, any discussion? Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have to confess, this is still a little confusing to me, even though you have some wonderful visuals on there. And I wanted to see if our planner could take another shot at helping me understand what exactly is changing here. So I can just be a better, you know, uh, decision maker on this, this, uh, ordinance. Thank you. You're muted.
Sorry about that. The only thing we're changing is the graphic. This was actually done by my colleague, L.A. Stapleton, and with an intent to sort of try to make it better. It's still kind of, uh, it's still not the best. And honestly, I, if somebody wanted to take another stab at it, they probably could, but, um, the intent is just to show what we mean by the definition of building heights when we're talking about on a slope. And where, how you're supposed to read the thirty-five foot building height when you're looking at a building that has a slope that is more than ten or is under ten feet or more than ten feet. So you have two different graphics in front of you. The first one, the front of the property, the front of the building is less than ten feet above the back of the building. So you don't have a full stories width of change, which means your thirty-five feet is actually red on the front. And it's that, so your thirty-five feet would be that high. Now, if you're looking at, and it's thirty-five feet regardless, it doesn't, so if your back is made, your back facade might end up being thirty-eight feet. Or thirty-six feet or thirty-seven feet, because you're only looking at the height from the street level. The other illustration shows what happens if the slope is much more steep. So you end up having a daylight basement out the back, or maybe even two floors that are actually lower than the front street. Then you need to measure it from the back because we don't want a building that ends up being sixty feet tall from one side and only thirty and thirty-five feet from the other. Instead, it's, it's, but it's that thirty-five feet plus ten, so you're giving people an extra ten. So the maximum height from the low side ends up being forty-five feet. So it's, it's trying to get, to factor in the fact that there's a lot of slope, particularly on Wanapa. Um, this, although this does apply anywhere in Cascade Locks, and it's really trying to help people figure out what to do when you have a changing grade that's over twenty percent on your slope.
Okay.
For the most part, nobody gets to use this, but yeah.
No, that totally worked. Thank you so much. That's it. That's clear to me. I appreciate it.
And I do want to make it clear to everybody that this doesn't change the building, the land use codes heights limits for any buildings. We're not recommending a change in the number that we currently regulate. This is just trying to make people understand what it means when we say thirty-five feet.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Or, um, comment, Jordan? Amanda, I guess just, just for triple clarification, to make sure we're all looking at the same graph, the same way. In that second illustration, Wanapa Street is essentially, or I guess any, any street downtown is on the right-hand side of that illustration. So the hill is sloping down away from.
Right.
From the street. I think, I think without that clarification, people could, could interpret that the street you're calculating based off could be on the left side. So.
No, I mean, the intent was to show, well, yeah, what happens if you're, um, sitting on one of the properties on Wanapa where the front is much higher than the back of the property? And how do you figure out how your height at the building is?
Any other questions? All right. Let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Adopt ordinance four, six, five, the CDC Article One Amendment passed unanimously.
All right. So this will now go into effect in thirty days.
Thank you. All right. Now we're moving on to adopt ordinance four, six, six, the CDC Article Two Amendment.
All right. Um, several of the time and with voice, I'm just going to go ahead and skip down to paragraph four because the first three are the same as the last staff report. Specific amendments recommended by the steering committee and within Article Two procedures will clarify what type of applications require a pre-application meeting and what the applicant will get out of a pre-application meeting and delete the requirement of meeting with an architectural review committee prior to your submission of a planning commission application. The Cascade Locks Planning Commission met on May nineteenth, twenty twenty five, told a public hearing on proposed ordinance to amend Article Two procedures as noted above. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the revision to Article Two to City Council. Council held a public hearing on June twenty third, twenty twenty five and left public comment open until July seventh. No additional comments were received. Attached for review are the ordinance in Chapter Eight of the Charter. A copy of the ordinance we provided to council and posted at City Hall seven days prior to the reading. Leading requirements to read the ordinance entitled only. Does council have any objection to reading with entitled only?
No objections.
Okay. Once again, I'll read it twice, entitled only, allowing us the ability to vote to adopt it in one reading tonight. Ordinance number four, six, six, in ordinance amending the community development code, Article Two Procedures. Ordinance number four, six, six, in ordinance amending the community development code, Article Two Procedures. Uh, this one's definitely got a lot more to it than the two previous items. And again, Amanda from I P R E is here to answer any questions. I move to adopt ordinance four, six, six, amending the Cascade Locks Development Code, Article Two Procedures.
Second. Happy or for it? Which one do you want?
I heard.
Who else?
Happy and for it.
Give it to happy. All right. Any discussion on this? Bernard?
Yeah, just one question. So because we're deleting in some planning, uh, proposals, the, the requirement for this architectural review, I can't help but go, okay, well, how do we ensure that, you know, uh, developments meet, you know, our architectural standards? Just as a side note, you know, I'm in Colorado, uh, I had a little college reunion, uh, down here. And there's some neat little towns out here and we went to a Costco. It does not look like a normal Costco. It's got this cool, you know, stone facade and like, they, you know, their architectural standards drove them to do that. And I'll be honest with you, I think lots of communities who do that, it costs to develop a little more, but they like the product. So is it, can we ensure that, you know, our developments, you know, make us proud of our town without this step?
I would, I would say, Bernard, that yes, the procedures that we're processing are, uh, don't eliminate the requirements that the applicants meet architectural design standards that are specified in, in chapters three and four of the Development Code. What they do is eliminate the Architectural Review Committee. Instead, it puts the burden of reviewing whether or not the applicant is meeting the architectural design standards on staff and then on the planning commission. So directly, it's, the intent of this modification is not to say that we do not want people to have to meet architectural design standards. It's to remove a bottleneck in our current process that is making it up to six months longer to get an application even approved before people can start an issue, even putting in a building permit. So it's really trying to make it faster for both the applicant and the city to get projects going.
Okay, I'm down for that. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Ready to vote on adopted ordinance four, six, six. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None. All right. Adopt ordinance four, six, six, the CDC Article Two Amendment passes unanimously.
Once again, it'll be thirty days before it goes into effect.
Is that thirty business days or?
Thirty days.
Thirty days. Okay. All right. Moving on. The Art Oregon Department of Energy Grant Application Approval.
All right. It is standard practice for most of the grant applications through the state of Oregon to have a letter from city council providing staff authorization to apply for the grant. This current grant is installation of solar panels, battery storage, and updates to the electrical system at the fire station. Attached for review is the approval letter, the project description, a proposed budget, and a feasibility study completed as part of the previous grant round. Uh, council options are to approve the letter of authorization or not to approve. We move to approve the letter of authorization that applies to the Department of Energy Grant for the Fire Station Micro Grid System.
I'll second. All right. And discussion? Tiffany?
So, uh, we, did we not get that question, my questions answered? So this is just, like, this is just a letter stating a war behind the project.
Yes, council is giving staff authorization to, to apply. Yeah. Council.
And this, um, this will be no cost to the cities?
Correct. It will be built into the grant application. Yeah.
Not the, okay.
Yes, yeah. Assuming we get the grant, the, the cost will be part of the, the application.
Other than the ten thousand dollars of staff time?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I, are, are we going to get something about, I mean, more information? Because I don't feel like, I mean, if the mayor and I hadn't gone to that meeting at the city, at the fire station, I would feel like there's a lot of missing information here. Um, such as the questions that I asked, you know, like, uh, the life expectancy of the panels and the batteries. And I, like their math, I'm not understanding their math. So, uh,
I, I did forward those questions to Micked Ked and they didn't respond. I, I thought I sent them out to everybody. I got it.
Yeah, I got it.
Um, but yeah, the average lifespan is twenty-five years. The math assumes a three point seven percent rate increase for electric cost every year. That's how they got up to the four hundred number.
Did you have anything, Eric?
Oh, I'm, I'm just a huge advocate. I mean, this is a huge thing. As we try to work for the fire department to be a warming shelter and as an opportunity maybe for it to be a community place, for it to have solar and electricity on demand when it's needed in emergencies is hugely imperative to the success of this town.
Yeah, because the solar comes with batteries too. So if we lose power, we can run the fire department off of the batteries as the go. And I don't remember how many hours I ever think.
It depends on feasibility.
What we put in on the switch, right?
Correct. Yeah. And it, it will, it will go first to the battery. And if the battery drains, it'll then go to the generator, allowing the battery to recharge while the generator is running between then, put more fuel in the generator. I mean, so worst case scenario, I want to say it's a week it can run. But I have to remember. Hours. What's that? It says two hours. Oh, does it? Okay. I don't know why it's been a week now. It, I had written it a few days, so. Right? Sorry.
Yeah, Eric.
It's my understanding that access will go back to the grid. Does the city just take on that electricity to distribute or does that, the BPA provide some sort of? City takes it on, I believe. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it, there isn't really a way for BPA to take it back. So the city would take it. So the city would take it and thus less coming from BPA? Correct. Um, that, we'd essentially be buying power from the fire station instead of buying it from BPA. Yeah. So, I mean, minimal, I mean, but it might be a house. Might be two houses worth. Correct. Yeah. So just on the, uh, the topic of just, uh, how long this can run for. Our generator we have is supplied with fuel through a propane tank that's on site. Is that right? Yes, I think so. Yes. And, uh, how many, how long can that, are there, I think it's the other modes on that would be the heating system for the fire station? Um, correct. So actually, the way it's wired now is the generator is just power. It's the HVAC system is not connected to. That's part of this grant also, where we connect the generator to the whole, it's just lights, HVAC, everything. Got it. So currently it only provides power for heat. Uh, electrical. Electrical. Yeah, yeah. It's not connected to the HVAC system, which I, I'm not sure why, but it's not. And do you have any idea how long it can, the generator can operate?
Don't forget my dad, I don't remember. He was going to try to run and I forget what he said. Do you remember what John said? He was going to try to run it and really find out how long it took to run it out. Yeah.
Do they just come, I'm sorry for all these questions. I'm just like the worst case scenario that we, you know, are winter storm and we're low on propane and we own cloud cover and we're out of power for more than two hours. Uh, should, you know, how often they come and fill that tank? Is it on a monthly service? Um, we've been as, as needed. So when it gets a little.
As needed?
Yeah. Yeah. I have a monitor online. You might. We, I have talked to John about changing the refill schedule, but I don't think we've said it yet. Yeah.
And we're not using the fire department as an emergency shelter for heat and cooling. If we have power out and we need emergency heat or cooling, we're going to be going to the school, is my understanding. Eric?
My thought is that, isn't I, sorry, I apologize for my speaking, but phase two or phase three of that bill that includes community, that's what I was referring to. Yeah, yeah, correct. And we did have them size the panels and the generator to make sure it would fit any phase two expansion. So no additional panels would be needed.
And Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of things. I too am hugely supportive of this project. The fact that it's a grant, we don't have to pay for it, uh, is a, a wonderful treat. You know, just for comparison, the, the panel project that I have on my house uh, was about twenty-two thousand dollars. I got, you know, seventy-five hundred from the federal government and I believe forty-five hundred from the state. But, uh, you know, I still had to pay whatever, whatever the difference is at eleven grand. Uh, and, but it's, it's been a wonderful, you know, cost reduction on my utility bill every summer since I put it in. And this is basically ten X. I'm a six point seven kilovolt, uh, system and this is what we say sixty-five. So, um, this is a neat opportunity for the city. The fact that it has battery backup, it makes it even especially, uh, even more neat. And, uh, reduces our reliance on, you know, uh, traditional energy. So, but I did have, I looked through the bid, uh, Mr. Bennett, and I, I happened to be staying with a friend who works for Rocky Mountain Institute here in Colorado. And he knows the energy sector better than most folks on the planet. And he looked at the number and he said, look, you're, the solar panel piece looks very much in line with, you know, costs. But your battery is way out of line. He said, uh, you should be paying between two hundred and four hundred dollars per kilowatt hour uh, for your battery storage. And what we're seeing is two thousand dollars per kilowatt hour. So he said, that is like ten X what I've seen in, you know, the American market. So I guess I want some additional research on why that number is so high. And if we need to rebid or, you know, do some additional analysis. Look, it's free money, but I, I still respect, you know, the agencies have to provide this. We should do this as low cost as possible without sacrificing quality. So I would request the city administrator and Chief Logan look into that, uh, before, you know, uh, we, we award any kind of bids.
Yeah, I mean, even now, I, I think that would just kind of a placeholder so we could know what to ask for in the grant. I'm guessing, but I'll double check with Micked also. Um, we don't know the exact cost until the bids come in.
Okay. And then, uh, I, I browsed some of your emails, uh, your responses. So, uh, i- is it your understanding that in a, in a general summer day, it will be producing more power than the, than the, the facility needs in a, in a given twenty-four hour stretch? And at night, you know, there's systems that need to still be drawing power. Will that be pulling from the battery or from the, uh, the, the, our grid? Do you know the answer to that? I'm not sure if you answered that.
I believe the grid. And the battery would only be as needed.
Only for emergency when power loss happens. That's when the battery kicks in.
Yeah, I, I think it's designed for emergencies only. I'm sure there'll be maintenance as well to, to test the battery and actually do some of the storage.
Okay.
But the, the main every night standard would be the grid.
Fair enough. Okay. And just for, you know, some of the council's, uh, uh, additional information. So, you know, I own a, I own an EV and I did a ton of homework before I bought this thing, because, you know. And I learned that battery life is largely driven by depth of discharge. So if you have a battery that's charged to whatever, you know, ninety, a hundred percent, and you discharge it to like zero percent, then you've used up one discharge, right? One full discharge. But if you're not discharging it on a recall, uh, re- uh, frequent basis, you, that battery is not degrading. So if what I'm hearing, this only gets used in emergency, uh, situations, which we all know are uncommon, but happen, this battery could. this battery could last decades, just FYI.
Tiffany? Bernard's situation is a little bit different because, I mean, he still has to pay back on it. So that, I mean, this is a great deal. I, the only thing I have, I mean, we have a 25-year life expectancy, but we have 35-year energy savings projections. So it's, the energy projections go beyond what the life expectancy, you know, is that for the solar panels or the batteries?
Solar panels, okay.
So, I mean, so to, how are we getting to the 35-year energy savings if solar panels are only, oh, I have to ask your pen, or I guess it'd be, folks that did the feasible setting.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right. All right, so we're gonna vote for the Oregon Department of Energy Grant Application Approval. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? All right, the Oregon Department of Energy Grant Application Approval has passed unanimously. Moving on to the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development Grant approval.
All right, once again, this standard practice for most of the grant applications through the state of Oregon to have a letter for the city council providing staff authorization to apply for the grant. The, this grant is for a detailed review and update of the Community Development Code relating specifically to housing. Attached review is the approval letter in grant application. Council options are to approve letter of authorization, not approve letter of authorization.
I move to approve the letter of authorization of five for the Department of Land Conservation and Development Grant. For review and update, the city has to block community development code housing incentives.
Where are, any discussion, Tiffany?
And I, okay, because I I don't remember, sorry, having this discussion before. I mean, I'm sure you've mentioned it, but we've not really had any in-depth, what, where did this come from?
So again, I I mentioned that we're gonna be applying for it, but really it goes back to the city strategic plan. One of our five areas pillars is affordable house. And the basis starts at having a code that works seamlessly and is updated to what is being done within the housing industry, so promoting workforce house.
And on page 44 of seven, there's kind of a line, is there anything more to that? In addition to a robust under number two, sorry. Number one, number two, the, there's kind of.
Oh.
Partial of the line missing, is there anything related to that?
I have to hop on the digital copy, when I hit print, those are showing. Review plan maps and how we're moving into target housing production. I obviously, I'm sure there is, but I don't know, I have to go check. The digital copy.
Oh, and this is the one that has the 10 hours of.
Yeah, this is, this is the.
10 hours, but I'm sorry, that wasn't the other one, sorry.
And Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor. So kind of on a similar line of questioning from Councilmember Pruitt. So, did 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 our new planner kind of look at our our development code? And say, hey, I see some holes in the way you're set up. And if we can make some some revisions, then this will improve your ability to attract the development of affordable housing. I I guess that that's, that would make sense to me, but can you tell a little about, I understand it's a council priority, and and trust me, you know me, I'm 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 very animated on in adding housing in Cascade Locks. But for this specific work, are we, is it very clear to you that we have, again, deficiencies in our code? That we can fix and 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 improve the the viability of of new housing coming online? What, you see what I'm trying to ask?
Correct, yeah, I I know Jamie, who was the planner who started this process, did do a a not a thorough review, but a basic review, found some items. But I guess the biggest push for it was, is the state's push for housing? Is they are giving out money to have cities review their code and update housing code. And I, you all might have a better idea, the last time this was actually updated for housing. But it was wired, why, why pass up the opportunity? If the state's giving out money for really no cost to the city to have an updated housing code?
Okay, thank you. And then just because I'm curious, uh, you know, I put forward the the language change on 80 accessory residential units, am I saying that right, Kathy?
Battery residential unit?
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, we we put there for those language changes that were going through the process. Can you give me a quick update on where that is?
I am waiting on findings to be written by the planner.
Okay, great. Okay, that makes a lot of sense, Mr. Bennett, thank you.
Yeah, and that's where a bit of the delay is. So Jamie, who came and met council not that long ago, left AKS. And so our contract was with AKS. Our new assigned planner is kind of picking up where she left off, but there is them trying to catch up. But I think, I mean, it shouldn't cause that big of a delay.
Any other comments, questions?
So, I'm sorry, you said work workforce housing, is that what you're, I mean?
Well, that's what our code, what our strategic plan says, affordable slash workforce housing. Which is, you know, each one of you could have a different definition of affordable and workforce housing, so.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Do you have anything else?
No.
All right, so we're gonna vote on the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development Grant Approval. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development Grant Approval has passed unanimously. All right. Approved city administrator salary increase.
All right, city administrator's salary was set at $100,000 for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Per the administrator's contract, the city administrator received the same cost of living adjustment as the rest of staff, but in salary at 102,800. The adopted fiscal year 2526 budget included a merit increase of an additional $2,080 for a total salary of 134,880. A 4.88 increase. Per the contract, council must approve an increase beyond the cost of living adjustment. Council's options are approve a merit increase, not approve a merit increase.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Your 4.88% is the entirety of the raise?
Yes.
Yes, sorry. The math is, so that the the math is 2%? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, it actually comes out to a dollar an hour.
2.8%. 2.8.
Yeah.
I'll do it. I move to approve a merit increase of $2,080 for the city administrator's salary.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? No discussion, no questions, open our.
Yeah, so I seconded it because I wanted to have the discussion. So I was gonna propose a motion that council approve half of the merit increase, not the full. And the the reason I was gonna propose that is we just conducted a review, a performance review of this city administrator. I gave my comments, we we did that in executive session. I'll just share that I generally marked him fours, there was a couple of instances where there are threes or twos. But by and large, he met most of the expectations that I had, you know. Again, I wasn't at the previous 12 months, but the time I was in observation. Since then, some things have emerged that I felt kind of pull back some of the the performance conclusions that I made in that original conversation. And to try to split the difference, I think that I would be supportive of paying just half of the proposed increase for this next budget year.
Tiffany?
And I'm gonna note, just because last year it was negotiated that he get a $6,000 raise. And council went ahead and approved the $10,000 raise. And I just kind of feel like he's already gotten his raise early. And, I, yeah, sorry.
I don't remember.
Are you done?
I think so.
Okay, Corky?
I I don't remember what it was called, but we looked at the different salaries of the acquisitions in the city. And if I remember correctly, as it stands, city administrator's making 119% of the average, but compared to cities. Do I remember that accurately? And, and I personally haven't seen a whole lot of examples where somebody is within their first five years of the job making over the average salary.
Any other comments, questions? Bernard?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. So in the salary study, can someone, does, is that report available? Or can we, can someone verify what what we found for the city administrator's salary? I didn't think we did his salary, I thought we did everyone else but him.
Well, we did do his salary, and it was at 100,000, it was 119% of damage.
Yeah, it's at 119%, that was at 100,000. Based on 100,000.
Thank you.
And that was, it doesn't have a date on this, otherwise I could tell you, but I have a copy of it, I could send it to you if you wanted it.
No, I I trust you.
Okay.
You know, this comes up, I'm gonna have to do salary adjustments and as long as I've been a manager, it's always been something we, you know, it's part of our budgeting process. And in my, I guess the way I filter this, like, as someone's doing, you know, meeting expectations, they're doing their job, then a coal increase keeps them at the same place they were at the year before. And for somebody to do better than that, they have to be doing better than average performance. And, you know, to second what Bernard said, I think I, on my evaluation, I did score him slightly better than average across the board. You know, but I I still also recognize the fact we're 119% of the average, you know, for this, in the salary study. And I still think, you know, 2.8% of the time when the economy is really struggling, I think is entirely fair.
Tiffany?
Just to clarify, we're not discussing the cost of living, because of.
That's in the contract, that's right, yes. I'm just saying, I'm only a paper, my personal feeling with the cost of living increase was appropriate. And anything in excess of that would be, you know, I guess you'd have to have some strong evidence to suggest that performance over the course of the year was, you know, warranted that merit increase. And I've been perfectly happy with our city administrative performance. I feel like he's been getting expectations, but I I'm not supportive of going beyond the coal increase, so.
Okay. So the motion, does anybody have any more questions, comments? The motion on the floor is to approve the merit increase for the city administrator. So all, is everybody ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Nay. All right, so the approval of the city administrator's merit increase has fell by six votes, nay, one vote, yea. Bernard's turn here, let's begin. Bernard?
So I'm not sure what the protocol is, maybe the recorder can clarify. But if I wanted to make a motion originally, as I was proposing, where it'd only be half, is that, is that possible now, or given that they've ruled on the not awarding the 2% increase? You see what I'm asking?
My my suggestion would be, you could have had a friendly amendment, you didn't. So my suggestion would be next meeting, but I think the mayor can make that call.
All right. Pretty good with that? All right, now moving onward to Resolution 15.3, the water rates.
Okay, trilogy LLC compliments of great analysis for the city's water distribution system. They have determined that we are over collecting on the debt service or the system improvement, but under collecting on rates to operate the system. A work session was held on July 14th and August 11th to discuss the rate change options before council today is Resolution 1523. The rates in the resolution are closest to consensus from work sessions. The resolution was attached to review, Attorney Cleveland has reviewed the resolution. Council options are to approve Resolution 1523, amend and approve 1523, or not approve 1520. Uh, some of the questions I've got, and the most common one I got was the dates on top of section, section six. I left those question marks, I wanted to confirm dates with council on when they wanted that implemented. And Bernard, I do thank you for catching the air in the table. The third three fourths inch CCTV fee should be 297, not 897, so, thank you.
Are we done? There, McKed? Just so we can have discussion, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1523.
Second?
Okay, now we can have discussion and questions.
I I guess also to clarify my apologies, it is the one-time rate hike up to the highest number of, or that, of option one from previous discussions, of 372 per 1,000 gallons, and then the 50% reduction in the debt service fee. The the straw poll from council at work sessions was all over the place. Those were the closest consensus. It also includes the increase for the meter-based rate.
Tiffany, and then I'll do you, Bernard? Okay, so it was my understanding that we, for the debt service, we are gonna reduce it, but not reduce it all the way. That's what I have worked in my the August 11th special, was that a regular meeting? Yeah, regular meeting, okay. I think, obviously, it's just such a tiny package. So, so I'm I'm a little confused. And then also, in all of our discussions about this issue, never once has the CCTV been part of our charts. And so when I get this today, it sort of looks like we're adding a new fee, but I was corrected. And it's not a new fee, but we we've never had any, none of our discussions up until this point have included the CCTV fee. So, I'm I just, in in the future, we should just have all of, all of it so that we don't have, so it doesn't look, because, I mean, for the average citizen, they're gonna look at these two things, and there's gonna be two different, it's gonna be two different things. There's gonna be a new fee, what looks like a new fee added. Also, I'm, um, we're changing the name of the meter-based fee?
It's actually listed as a rate in the resolution.
Yeah, in the.
In our current resolution 1414, it listed as a meter-based rate.
Since, do we know for?
I didn't go back, I just looked at the most current one to check the definition. I don't know if they changed it in previous iterations.
Because I think on our bills, it says something different.
Yes.
One meter base term.
Yes, what's on the bill and what's on the rate are two different verbiages. We can update the the printout of the bill to match what's in the resolution. But the resolution does state it's a meter-based.
That's, I'm, I'm good for now.
All right, Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor. So just two things. Uh, one, I support, well, actually, three things. I support reducing the, let's see, make sure I get my terms right here, hold on. The WSIP fee to the 1110. And I, but but the 372 per 1,000, again, I I'm more in favor of a graduated increase in. In uh anytime you want to adjust rates. We're going from two fifty to three seventy-two, literally, I mean, what's proposed in one resolution. So it would be my preference that we 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 ease our our customers into. I would argue we ended at three seventy-five because I like round numbers. But I sent the city administrator, uh, I said, look, year one, make it three dollars. Year two, three twenty-five, year three, three fifty, and then year year four, three seventy-five. So it's my preference that we ease them into that. We make the reduction on the WSIP. And the last thing, I don't know if the city administrator was able to do this, but. I I I love net round numbers and there's a lot of, there's a lot of uh. Uh, uh, there's a lot of studies to show consumers like round numbers. And I really would like us to use round numbers for all these fees. And if you you see what I put, I'm like, were we able to do that, Mr. Bennett?
Certainly, it's up to council. What do you all want to do?
Yeah, no, but were they able to see what I proposed on rounding fees? You see what I'm asking?
Yeah. Bernard, I want to point out that last meeting, we uh we voted, we had a vote on what way we wanted the city administrator to go with this. And we had uh went with option one for the rate increase. And then option two for the loan repayment. So I had that as being fifteen sixty-seven instead of eleven ten. I don't know if. Other council members remember that I happened to write it down. Um, so the rate. I feel like we've already discussed it. So I don't know how the rest of council feels.
I'm not particularly, I don't think, I I the the rate is not as important to me as this, Bernard.
That's what?
The rate doesn't matter to me at all. Like, I I don't, you know, it's as far as, you know, if I even put on that, it doesn't matter.
Okay, did you have something, Marion?
I just have questions on the resolution here.
Okay.
Um, on section four, it says debt service fee. That should be debt service loan. It is a loan. For the corrosion control. And the same with section five, it's a debt service loan for the water system improvement. It's not a fee. It's a lo, it's a loan. You put fee in there, then our charter is gonna. Go crazy because it's fee services and charges.
Yes, but our charter only limits it to creating an increase.
But it is a loan. In my book, it's a loan. It's not a fee, it's a loan.
Right, so a debt service fee or payment that falls without the scope of the chart. We, the city has the right to change any fee. Towards an obligated debt to ensure we can pay the debt. This falls outside the scope of the chart. And we're lowering rate.
I don't agree with it anyway, so.
Okay, um, anybody else have question? Question, comment?
I guess I I can move the different consensus on the the debt fee.
The debt?
Yeah.
To the fifteen sixty-seven?
Yeah, I listened. I I went through with this straw poll. Unless there was some kind of verbal agreement I missed.
That's, I just have that written down and I had option one for the rate increase and option two for the debt service.
Which is, I mean.
Yes.
Up to council.
Uh, Bernard?
Madam Mayor, yeah, uh, can council member vote? Could you tell me where where you're at on those verbiage? Uh, issues you're you're pointing out. I I I I know where you're at.
I'm going based on on what the bill says. It said wastewater improvement loan. Doesn't say wastewater improvement fee.
I'm just saying, but can can you show me where in the resolution? Uh, Marion?
Section four and five.
Section four and five. On the first page.
And we originally put that as a loan, so when that was paid, it would drop off of our bill. That was the original intent of that. So if we change it to a fee. Yeah, they could never end.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Eric. Okay, one, I think we just need to vote. But second, to address this issue, debt service fee incurred by the water system improvement project. It is stating a specific project that is that fee is paying towards the loan. So the debt service fee is the fee that I have to pay that goes towards that line item in the budget that goes towards that loan. And it says specifically waste system improvement project. Second one, corrosion control treatment project. I I, I don't know. I would like to just vote.
I would too, but I don't see. Why we're, because in our charter, it says that about fees, taxes and charges.
No, I'm I'm not aware of this. I'm I've been. Sitting in this chair telling me what that charter says.
Right.
Mr. Bennett, who has had a specific discussion with. Mr. Cleveland, has expressed that Mr. Cleveland's interpretation is that a loan sits outside of that.
It was, I was on council then, and that was set up so it would fall off when it was paid.
I totally agree, but it says, I mean, what I'm trying to say, I'm trying to advocate for that.
Yes.
It says water system improvement project of two thousand eighteen. It says specifically that project. So when that project's paid off, audios.
I don't know. Go ahead, Bernard.
Yeah, I I thank you for that conversation. Uh, I read it how, uh. Uh, Mr. Calerita, uh, you know, we're going through each of the charges. That are being applied by the city to operate our facility. We have our meter base rate, our meter maintenance fee. Flower flow fee, except debt service fee, those, and then under that, it talks to the nature of what that fee is doing. Uh, so I don't, I think that that actually ensures that. When the, for example, corrosion control treatment project is complete, then the fee is no longer, uh, uh, you know, levied on our customers. It just is the same thing for the the water system improvement project. So I'm feel, I'm comfortable with that language, uh, including the description describing each of those. I I I I, so I, that's where I fall on that. But back to the um. The question on the eleven ten or fifteen sixty-seven, I guess I just want to reiterate my support for. Uh, what I, what I, I know you had a conversation. I'm sorry I missed you guys, uh, last meeting. But I continue to say our obligation is to provide a properly funded utility that's efficient. And when you raise the fee, the fee above eleven ten, you're you're you you are now. Putting, pushing our rates higher or even closer uh to our competitors. And and it's not necessary. We can meet our debt obligations at eleven ten. And I think we should do that and not further burden our customers uh while still responsibly managing these utilities. That's why I'm supportive. If you guys don't want to round the numbers, again, that's not a deal killer for me. But I I I strongly uh hope you'll support keeping the WSIP at eleven ten.
All right, uh, Courtney.
Um, just real quick, I want to throw out maybe, um. A loan fee has its own definition. And so when you are using a loan fee in reference to a loan, it has its own set of definitions. Little addition, I mean.
Uh, Eric.
I'm going to address Bernard's point. I felt that there was a small contingency that was at Bernard's eleven and change. There was a strong contingency that wanted to keep it at a certain, certain rate at the spread start, present rate. And I felt that was the negotiation where the compromise existed, was at the fifteen.
Yes. We've already decided. That's what I said last council. We decided that it was gonna, we were gonna go all the way with the rate and we were gonna go there with the fifteen sixty-seven of the. Um, loan payment. Any other questions or comments?
Implementation date. Um, obviously, the sooner the better, uh, to to give our system more financially sound, but also giving. Um, residents enough time to prepare and adjust for the increase. Um, we could do is, at this point, as early as October first. Um, but that's really about one month of notice. It's up to council. I I would suggest, um, November, give them two months.
That's what I would say, because we do have a, a waste.
November first, is everybody, is with that date?
I think the point you're about to say is the wastewater increase happens next month. We have a power increase happening in October. And then this would be in November.
Yeah.
So if it passes November first for the increase.
Just to clarify, on the motion we have is to approve this resolution, which has the. Water system improvement fee is set at eleven ten. Are we able to make an amendment to that? Uh, ranging will be agreed to fifteen sixty-seven, so we can get this done?
Yes, we can. Right, we can amend it. Yeah, it was not too late.
So Tiffany, would you like to amend your motion, please?
Well, yeah. I kind of like Bernard's idea of gradually uh bringing the water rate up too, but I mean. I mean, because it is a pretty stark jump. I mean, it's a, well, I guess it's only.
Well, you're reducing the loan now. So really, it's a reduction in the bill.
Okay, so yeah, I will make a, an amendment to, um, bring the WSIP. Um, I guess we're still gonna call it a fee, loan fee, uh, to fifteen sixty-seven. Which is a reduction from twenty dollars that we currently pay.
Do we have to have a second on the amendment as well?
Most likely do.
All right. By Keller. Bernard, did you have something else? Are you ready to vote?
I would like to ask a question on that, please.
Okay.
Yeah, so. When we looked at those scenarios, unless I'm mistaken, if we, if we go with that scenario two. And we drop this to fifteen sixty-seven, but we raise it to three seventy-two. Their bill is actually going up. It's not staying, it's not staying flat. Is, that was my remember. Can the city administrator confirm?
That is correct.
Is on the average utility customer if we do what be, what was just uh proposed by Councilmember Pruitt?
Um, again, it would depend on the usage rate, but if I remember right, the average bill would essentially go up. Um, about twelve dollars. I mean, because the the original option one was the average rate increase and the debt cut would cancel each other out. So your monthly bill is be the same. So if you're only counting by the debt bill by half, that's the other. Um, I guess. Five, so I guess not that much. Uh, six dollars?
Four.
Four, am I doing my math?
Yeah, if you're going down from twenty to fifteen sixty-seven, it's a little.
Yeah, so, okay, so it's, yeah, not as much as I thought. I actually have eleven stuck in my head.
Yeah.
Yeah, so five dollars. All right, give or take.
Any more comments? All right, all in favor of resolution fifteen twenty-three on the water rates, say aye.
Aye.
Two ayes. Did you say aye, Bernard?
No, ma'am.
Uh, opposed, say nay.
Nay. And you didn't get the ones, the 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 two ayes.
The two ayes was happy in Keller.
Thank you.
And the rest were nays. So the resolution fifteen twenty-three for the water rates has failed.
Okay, where does council want to go from here?
Bernard?
So, of course, I'm looking for middle ground here. Um, I would support a rate proposal where we drop the. W S S I P fee to the fifteen sixty-seven. How, but in addition to that, if we do that, then I would like to see the. Uh, the the per thousand gallons usage in a graduated for format. Something similar to what I proposed. It doesn't have to be over four years. It could be three. I don't want it done in two. That feels too quick. But I would support a rate proposal that did something to that effect. And fifty, fifteen sixty-seven on the W uh S S I P. To be clear, my preference is, uh, if I were to rank these. Preference number one is eleven ten on the on the capital and then we graduate. Uh, option two is fifteen sixty-seven and then, uh, we we, uh. We graduate. Uh, option three would be, well, those are the two options I'm, I would support.
Maybe Keller.
I I guess. I'm I'm completely lost. I I understand Miss Bond's point that. I know why she said no, but we left the meeting or the work session, I don't remember, work session meeting. I thought we had an agreement and now we're at a no, and now we've got to do what, do another half an hour of this. I I mean, I don't know what changed.
Well, for me, what changed for me on a no vote is these things changing on my bill. Where we're going from a corrosion control treatment loan to a fee. So what if we're not on this council and we don't have, we have new staff and everything? And they see it as a fee. It's not a loan anymore. So that was my reason for voting no. Think you got it, Pete?
Well, I guess, yeah, but in the resolution clearly defined what those fees you're gonna be collecting for. And I guess that's where I guess I felt, I guess, uh. I personally felt the confidence and the understanding that we're collecting money for the, you know, uh, the the USIP is for that loan. When that's paid off and.
We can add. Um, I don't know what you want to call it, very specific language naming the loan. And the fact that it will be paid, the loan, the fee will stop being collected when the loan is paid off. And that can be added.
Is that not clear?
It's, I guess, somewhat implied in the language.
And it's all a matter of perception. So you get a different council and see how they interpret it and all that, then we can wind up, oh, it's a fee. And then we're, there we are, Pete.
So I mean, it just says that the 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 monthly charge will be assessed to each water system customer. And uh, based on the size of the water meter for the payment on the debt servicing curve. So if there is no payment on the debt service because the loan been paid off, then.
That money quits being charged to the customer.
Yes, right. That's what it says in the resolution.
But it's a, my, I'm just giving you my reason for about no is because. Of that change from fifty, it's just that simple. I would like it to stay as a loan.
So in the, in the resolution, if the debt service fees we're collecting, you'd like it to say debt service loan incurred by the.
Why did we even have to change it? Why can't it say corrosion control treatment loan, water system improvement loan, wastewater improvement loan? It says about, why are we changing it?
So I I guess so.
I would like what's. My bill. And I don't want to change the bill to match the resolution. And I feel like that's what we're doing. We're like. Changing it to a fee and changing this, when this has been working for all these years. I don't see any sense in changing that.
And I think if I remember, I'm sorry. Just try to wrap my head around this because I'm like confused, like.
Yeah.
Mr. Keller as well, uh, the, um. And the reason why this language is in the resolution is because it's mirroring the language that's in the resolution is replacing. Correct?
Um, I did do, it's actually a significant change from the resolution. The previous one talked about establishing the fees and rate changes. This was a change to it being maintained. Or or I guess really, definition of what they were, are those sections one through five. And then six is the rates associated of each of those definitions. Is how it's said.
But so that, just to recap then, you'd be supportive and do I take it that there'd be support, you know, is it also voted no? If the words here match what's on the bill, is that right?
Yeah.
I, for me, that, I would vote yes, if it stayed the same. We don't need to change all this.
Not for me.
So not for you?
No.
Okay, so that you're, who all would be in favor if we kept it on the bill and in the resolution the way it is? Raise your hands if you're in favor of it. So that gives us six.
So that's good. All we need is four.
So, if we can get a motion.
In one.
Can we amend the thing to get a motion for that or no?
Took a vote.
You took a vote.
Already voted, so I'd have to bring it back.
Yeah, my suggestion.
Okay, bring it back so it stays clean. Okay.
I'm updating the verbiage in the resolution to match what prints out on utilities.
Yes. That it's loans. Go ahead, Tiffany.
We're still good with the three seventy-two and not graduating the increase.
The rate and, yeah, we had already decided that I'm I'm. Yeah, go ahead, Todd.
See, I just take, I just wrapped my head around this language and how it's gonna look in the resolution. I mean, we're not expecting our residents, you know, the utility customers to pay the loan. We're asking to make, and how how is that?
We are. We are paying the loan. Go ahead, Eric. Go ahead, Eric, go ahead.
No, no, I, I, hold on, my, hold on. My, Eric, hold on.
Can I please just imagine, Eric?
I have a loan on my car.
Mm-hmm.
It is my loan payment. It is not your loan payment. It's not Mary Ann's loan payment, it's my loan payment. However, I choose to budget that is my prerogative. The city has a loan payment. We are, I mean, I don't know how to get around this. We are in essence charging them a fee to pay for that loan payment. And yes, there's just, whatever it takes to get this approved, let's, let's do it.
Yes.
But that's, that's that's what we're wrapped in.
That's how I understand.
It's not only just saying that if we're paying for that huge, fatty loan, the city is.
The city has chosen to pay, to charge me a fee to contribute my portion to that payment.
Courtney. From an accounting perspective, to expand on what I already said, a loan fee is an additional, one-time, or recurring charge for specific services associated with the loan, such as processing or applying. That is a loan fee. It has its own definition. So if we take a loan and we say here's the fee, then we are calling that a loan fee, and it has its own definition. So I would like to see it as a loan, a loan payment, or, or something along those lines. But a loan fee has its own definition, and we are not reading that definition in these payments, in my
Yeah. Bernard, you got something real quick?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, just because it's not clear to me from the last meeting, because it sounds like Councilmember Pruitt has maybe some reservations, or may, maybe a, a concern about not doing the grad, or, or going to a straight to a three seventy two. So i- am I correct in understanding, last meeting, you guys agreed, let's set it at three seventy two, set it at fifteen sixty seven, understanding that your, your, the, the, the water rates for your average customer will be increasing? Is that the conversation you had?
Yes, we did. Yeah, we voted on that last time.
Oh, we took a poll.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Poll, and can I
Go ahead.
Yeah, Bernard, if I could answer that real quick, like kind of the rationale, and I, correct me if I don't get this right. But I think part of the rationale was that if we don't do the one-time, like immediate bump, we actually have to do a higher increase in the long run, because we're not collecting the money upfront. So that actually results in charging people more money in the long term. Does that make sense? That you don't have the, the packet in front of you from the last meeting, but there's in there, there's three different options, and the one where we have a staggered approach, you end up at a higher rate of the end. Does that make sense?
It, I can understand that. I guess I would want to see what, yeah, what, what was the impact? Because, again, we're about to raise electric rates, we're about to raise sewer rates. It sure would be nice to not raise water rates and still meet our obligations. We can do that with a different proposal. But, you know, I, I don't know, I'm very sensitive to the rates our customers are paying, and I sure wish we could slow the burden we're asking them to take on because, you know, everything's going up, guys. I was just at the grocery store, and I, I couldn't believe coffee's like, it's, it's like two or three dollars more per pound. It's incredible how prices are going up. And, but we can do our part to hold, keep, you know, keep some of this stuff down. And so, yeah, I just want to double check, understand where you guys were at.
And we're going to table this because we already have to bring it back to the next council.
Understand, thank you.
We're done with this discussion tonight. All right, so moving onward.
Then maybe, well, he, he probably got the last packet. So it's in the last, it's in the August eleventh.
Yeah, so, yeah. So we're moving on to committee appointments.
I move for a point, Harry Troeger to the Tourism Committee.
And there was an addition to the appointments. Did everybody get that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Norm Bork. I think I can ask him directly.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve Carrie
Carrie.
by Keller. And both of these are for tourism, by the way. And
I'll second that.
Second by Bernard. Any discussion?
Where is Norm's application?
Any discussion, or we're ready to go?
Ready.
Right. All in favor of putting Harry on Tourism Committee with a opening that expires on twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-seven? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Harry, welcome to Tourism Committee, and thank you for applying. And that term will end twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-seven, right?
Definitely will notify him tomorrow.
And then do we need to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to the law. All right, motion to add, Norm? This tourism.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Eric?
I have an incredibly difficult, I mean, I can't even believe this is up for discussion. This gentleman has I mean, I, I can't think of a word stronger than bullied, pressured me, has horribly disrespected the work that my family does in this community, has horrible acts and abilities to describe his point. He has used misogynistic language to describe the relationship that I have with my wife. He has stalked my neighbor across the river to a grocery store to accost her about a statement that was made on a safe platform or social media. This gentleman is a disservice to the great work that this community does.
Courtney.
Do we, do we have any formal written complaints like that?
No.
Any reports ever made? Please.
I just say, I, I, I don't know of any formal written complaint process for something like this, honestly, I mean
There's a process for that.
Any other discussion? Bernard.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, this is, this is always challenging because, you know, everyone has freedom of speech, and they're, they have that right to speak their mind. Having said that, what I'm hearing from a fellow council member is a little unsettling. So, I don't know, it makes us a challenge. I've seen some of the comments that's been made, and, you know, I take issue with some of them as well. I don't know, it's a tough call.
Do anybody else have any comments? All right. So we're voting for Norm to get on Tourism Committee with a term that ends on twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
So three opposed would be Seager, Keller, and Happy, wait, okay. And four yays, which means Norm is on Tourism Committee, and his term expires twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-seven.
Right, he will also be notified.
Thanks for the individuals for applying for the committees. That now leaves us, just so we're all on the same page, we have one opening on budget, one opening on planning, and one opening on tourism. So please, just let the community know that we need these positions filled. Okay, moving on to approval to pursue full-service intergovernmental agreement and IGA with North Wasco PUD.
On July fourteenth, North Wasco PUD presented to the City of Cascade Locks regarding potential partnership opportunities. On August fourteenth, I met with North Wasco executive staff to further explore options. North Wasco expressed interest in a full-service IGA rather than the à la carte model limited to engineering, mapping, estimated services, and other behind-the-scenes services. Discussions with the mayor and other internal stakeholders indicate alignment around the benefits of a full-service model. North Wasco PUD offers operational stability, technical expertise, economies of scale, long-term strategic support. The Electric Department Fund could redirect over seven hundred thousand dollars in personnel and material and services expenses, support services with the IGA. Staff is asking, excuse me, asking for a formal vote from council as to whether or not they would like to proceed with formal negotiations toward a full-service IGA with North Wasco PUD. If approved, staff will work with North Wasco to develop a draft agreement and bring it back to council review and approve specific details within the IGA. Council options are to approve entering into negotiations, not approve entering into negotiations.
Bernard?
I'd like to make a motion that we not approve enter negotiations with Wasco County PUD.
Bernard will second that.
All right, is there any discussion? Uh, Eric?
No, sorry. This is not an action item. So it just can sit.
No, it's an action item.
It's on the bottom of the
Just aye.
It's on the
One's on eight.
Oh, you didn't get that updated?
Yeah, the update is on aye.
It's an aye.
I know, because this is
I know, sorry.
Our council packets are never quite complete.
Check your phone. Okay. Bernard, is that from last time, or do you do, I have a, so for it second that you motioned it, and discussion, is that up?
I have some comments, yes, please.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, look, this proposal, it would be a radically radical change in the way the city operates. That doesn't mean I'm dis, I'm dis, I disagree with it, but I thought that after they, the, the Wasco County crew came to Cascade Locks, I understand we were going to put this on a workshop and go through some of the pros and cons of doing this, and then make an assessment. And my, it would be my hope, if we like the idea of potentially contracting out for these city light services, then we, the next step would not be to enter into an IGA, but, but to go through an RFP process. And see if other, uh, uh, you know, properly staffed entities could take on those responsibilities, force them to bid on it, you know? IGA, they're going to pick any price they want. Through a competitive bid, there's putting pressure on what they're going to charge to provide these services. So to me, this is way a cart before the horse. I would like to recommend council, uh, put this as a workshop item, and then, again, that's when we've even talked about whether we want to go out for RFP. If they do, we do that, then they'll be able to bid like anybody else, and possibly move this solution forward.
Tiffy, I don't even understand why we're talking an RFP. I mean, we're talking about hiring two more employees and a utilities director. I don't understand, I don't I don't even understand how we got, I don't understand how we got here, and their presentation really didn't tell me much. I mean, it told me what they covered, told me what they do, but I, I don't understand. I mean, I, I feel like this is, we're just, I agree, the cart before the horse, but I, um, I, I feel like we're just giving the electric department away, and I don't under, I don't understand how we got, I don't understand how we got here. I mean, we went from talking to them about providing architectural services, and somehow we've gotten to giving away all of it. I just, it, I'm, you know, that's
Do we vote? I feel like we're all no.
Do you have anything? Did you have anything? No? All right, so we are going to vote on the approval to pursue full-service intergovernmental
We already, we already made a motion to vote.
Oh, no, oh, yeah, to not approve to pursue full-service intergovernmental agreement with North Wasco PUD. All in favor to not pursue full-service intergovernmental agreement with North Wasco PUD, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimously, we will not pursue any full-service intergovernmental agreement with North Wasco PUD. Thank you, council. All right. Now we got committee reports.
No committee reports.
Audit update.
We don't have an official piece of paper to give. I was going to touch on it in the updated CA report. Usually I try and get updates from the auditors on Mondays for the most recent information. We have the hiccup with the treasury item, working on that focus today. We did get more, more requests from the auditors today. So hopefully to nail down more information from them this week. So I will try and get an update this week on it. But nothing in writing to me. It's that we, we give them stuff, and they keep asking for more, and it never seems to happen.
Anybody have any questions or anything? We're ready to move on to the next item. For the city administrator? About the audit.
No.
No? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to the City Administrator Minute Report and CA.
First, crime stats. So it attaches a breakdown of crime statistics over the last five fiscal years. While some of the early data is missing, and the report provides a useful overview of incidents known to the sheriff's office, this data can support future public safety planning and funding applications. EMT and paramedic school initiative to support economic development and secure funding for Phase Two of the fire station. Chief Logan and I have discussed a theoretical partnership with Mount Hood Community College to host the EMT and paramedic school in Cascade Locks. Mount Hood Community College currently does not offer EMT or paramedic courses. The idea remains can, uh, remains conceptual, but the recent announcement of a relevant grant by the Economic Development Administration has reinvigorated interest in exploring this opportunity. Following the announcement, I reached out to Mount Hood CC, and they expressed openness in the concept and willingness to engage in further discussions. While the outcome of this conversation is uncertain, we believe the initiative holds promise and merit, continued, worth continued exploration. Master facilities plan. During the discussion with council members, it became clear that the shift from focusing solely on city hall to a citywide facilities plan was not well communicated, felt abrupt, excuse me, and lacked broader context and explanation. In my effort to estimate the cost in renovating city hall, I consulted with architects and fellow city managers. The consensus from the conversations was to avoid narrowing the city's focus to a single facility without revealing the broader needs of the city and the community. I agreed with these assessments, especially given our multiple aging buildings and under, underutilized land assets. In more detailed discussions with one architectural firm, we explored the process and costs of developing a master facilities plan. As an example, they shared an eight-building master plan they completed for the University of Oregon, which cost approximately fifty thousand dollars. Using insights from these conversations and AI tools, I developed a scope of work for a master facility plan tailored to Cascade Locks. Scope of work has been distributed for quotes to help the city budget for work. As of August eighteenth, no quote has been received, and they did send out a copy of that scope of work as well. And then, electric department interviews for working form in position have been rescheduled for August twenty-first. From August twenty-first to August twenty-eighth, the city is partnering with the City Grove, a fellow member of the Oregon Municipal Electrical Utilities Group to assist in being reprocessed. Unfortunately, their GM had to reschedule promptly the change. And in the last paragraph, we've already discussed. Additional report came out today. First item is July twenty-two, twenty twenty-five financial report. As we start a new fiscal year, staff are permitted to provide monthly reports in a timely manner for council. This report will look different from past as we try to present it in a more non-financial expert format. We are open to feedback to provide council with the information they need and want without overwhelming council. Quarterly and review reports are being in more detail with more narratives, and the monthly report in between will be one page at a very high level or similar to the last page of this report. The July twenty-twenty-five report is attached. COVID items and treasury reporting, council may have gotten notification regarding past due reporting of the expenditures of COVID funds and the possibility of having to return the funds. This has become top priority for myself and Finance Director Clark. We have meetings set up with the necessary folks and working to get access to the treasury portal. Once a solid understanding of what needs to be done and a path forward, council will be informed communications regarding the reports and timelines for the state and US Treasury were not reaching city staff.
All right, Bernard?
Yeah, so I just want to focus primarily on the master master facility plan, uh, product, proposal. So I'm very much in favor of this. We did a, a city hall project when I worked for the City of Shoreline, and it was a very expensive project, and the entire city took on the entire burden. And they actually had to go to the voters to get money to build this, this, this facility. I am not in favor of that. And what I am in favor is that we do a, a multi-purpose, like, you know, public facility where we did a survey, I understand we got some good feedback from that, where multiple services are provided from one location, or city. I would love for our post office to be there. To that point, I've actually, I actually visited the post office recently when the head honcho was there saying goodbye to one of the employees who just left. And I spoke with him, he said, we would And I spoke with him, he said, we would very much be interested in co-locating at a new location. I'm like, oh, my gosh, that sounds wonderful. So what I would hope we do is that we reach out as many, as, as many potential partners as possible we can. And then if we get to the point where we're gonna build a new facility, we're sharing this burden. And I promise you, it will be dramatically less on our, on our, our, our citizens if we can have all these entities helping. And keep in mind, whether you have one entity or four entities, you have to get electricity to them, you gotta get water to them, you gotta do all that utilities. If you're only one, you're, you're taking the whole burden. If you're multiple, that's spread among multiple. And I think we'll, we'll be very pleased if we pursue a proposal like that and we look at the final price tag, it's gonna be dramatically less than the city taking on the whole burden. But that starts with the master facilities plan, arguably including outreach for potential partners. So if we know if they're in or out.
Anybody else have comments on this, Tiffany?
Yeah, I have a comment on this. Um, this monthly financial report, uh, is very pretty. Uh, but like, I'd like some things like the revenue, I, I don't know what that's telling me. It doesn't tell me how much, what percentage, what, uh, I, it's got lots of multi colors that I don't, you're scanned. I mean, and the same thing with the expenditures. Um, I wa- I mean, what is other? I mean, I, I'd like some clearer definition on that.
I asked that question, it's debt service, intergovernmental, or inner, inner fund transfers, uh, capital expenses. Anything outside of operating, I guess.
Okay, would be, uh, it would be.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, this is a very first rock interactive, we're, we're definitely gonna clean it up.
And then personally, uh, you know, uh, revenue and spend in the last page, uh, also it would be nice to have a date, year to date because sometimes our, um, our financial reports are a month behind. So is this year to date August, year to date July, you know, just if you could, um, get a little bit more specific. I get the gist of this, but are, are we at times going to get the full, like, itemized? Or is this, is this?
That was not the intent, it was to give a high level of it, not to go through every budget line, was give council a general uh, or snapshot of where we are at the twenty thousand mark.
So if for those who are more interested in the nitty gritty, are they, uh?
You, you, you can ask and we can print out a report.
Thank you. Anybody else? Marion?
Now, this master facility plan, um, do you have an idea where the fifty thousand is gonna come from?
That was just an idea. Um, I get the quotes and see what the cost of us and really at this point, it's the budget for next year. I don't think it's gonna happen, I mean, if we can get money for this year, great, it was more to budget for next year. Yes.
Um. Not a mayor's.
I don't have a big question. Okay. What you could have for?
I didn't mean to, I got that, so I like lost track. It was innocent.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to, to talk about the monthly financial report. Although this is a very nice report, um, it doesn't help me deal with what I have to deal with. And I would prefer the, uh, individual line item for my, uh, for my monthly report, please.
Okay, Bernard?
Yeah, so just, I think if I understood it right, that fifty thousand dollars was for a major facilities. You said eight into, I, I, I think that was a much broader scope that what, what we're proposing. I'll tell you, Gretchen did a facilities master plan, uh, uh, you know, study. And for our entire Department of Engineering Service, which is a massive department, multiple facilities and purposes, sewer, water, storm, et cetera, it was twenty five thousand dollars. So I, I don't anticipate this, this project will be like fifty grand, I think it'll be much less.
The, the unofficial quote I got from the architects was about twenty five grand.
That makes more sense.
The example was fifty grand for the University of Oregon for their plant services. It is eight massive buildings.
Right.
Um, the difference though is they have eight buildings, those ain't building, eight buildings ain't going anywhere. So it's prepping those eight for the future. We're talking about whole new city hall, community civic center. We have warehouse for storage facilities that are fifty years old and had holes and then need replaced. So it's, it's a slightly different scope, but you know, rough estimates twenty five thousand.
Thank you.
But until we get official quotes back, I, I don't know. Yeah, I'm trying to find it, get a number that I can work with for a budget.
Okay, so we're gonna be moving on. Go ahead. On this scope, scope work, uh, a lot of the historical uses to say saints, that doesn't, uh, doesn't make any sense. And, um, do we have an address for this space, it was too big, that lots?
There is no address assigned. Um, one of them.
Like location?
Uh, one of them is downtown and the other one is on the east end of town past our substations. Uh, actually by Owl's, forget the name.
Herman Creek, that's the one we showed us last time.
Owl's, it's Herman Creek Road.
No, Herman Creek Road.
Herman Creek Road, right? Okay, I, yeah, I always forget the name, but yeah, it's on, it's on the east end of town. And the other one is the little, is it like point seven acres?
The downtown one?
Yeah.
Is that, that's the one behind the, um, the?
Yeah, I think I combined them where it's, it's actually the plaza and that little triangle, I think I combined the two. As kind of one downtown lot.
Okay, so that's the downtown plaza?
Yeah.
And the vacant lot is something different, or is that part of?
Oh, did, did I separate them? I don't, I haven't looked at it.
Okay, so that, yeah, okay, so that's the one behind, uh,
Correct, yeah.
That's weird in that place.
Uh, yeah, I.
So, yeah, I just don't understand the historical use that just says saint for everything but the buildings.
Really, really, it's mainly for this building that its historical use was K through twelve. The rest of them, since they've been built, haven't changed their purpose. This is really the only one.
I'm thinking, yeah. All right, we're all good? All right, so we're gonna go to mayor and city council comments. Bernard, let's start with you.
Thank you, mayor. Just, uh, or one or two things. Uh, one, I wanna welcome our new, uh, council member, uh, uh, Kyleman. Uh, congrats on the appointment, I'm sorry I missed it. Um, uh, happy to have you join the, the team and looking forward to working with you. Uh, some of the other council members know I like to do a, an outreach and we sit down and maybe have a cup of coffee and get to know one, uh, know one another. And I'll, uh, be, uh, reaching out soon enough to, to do that and, uh, would love to, to get to know you better. So again, welcome and thanks for joining us. And then let's see, and one other thing, come back to me, I'll try to remember it.
All right. How about Courtney?
Job of city council is not a judicial branch. Um, it's not our job to pass judgment. Uh, I appreciate the CAC and everybody else coming in, uh, and sharing all of this wonderful information. New grants are very exciting and looking forward to next meetings, to see what happens, thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Uh, Tiffany?
Okay, uh, thank you, thank you, thank you. I wanna say thank you for paying the one side of my regulator red.
Oh, yes.
Finally, yes.
Yeah.
You should put that in for.
Yes.
That was, uh, I would, we would have had it for the weekend, but that's okay. Hopefully, uh, hopefully people will, um, abide by it. Uh, also, thank you for, uh, the city, uh, after me paying for the light shield, it's made a significant difference.
Oh, good.
Really, very much appreciate it, my whole backyard is not lit up.
Go to here.
That being said, I was wondering if, uh, for those who want to be able to do it and can't afford it, can we like, uh, set up a, a, a fund based on income for those who can afford it out of the community fund? Or like, you know, maybe ten people to be able to get a shield put up? I.
I see you all, yeah, I can't make that decision.
I mean, is that something the council would support? Because I mean, I, I mean, I don't, I wish we didn't have to pay for it, but apparently there's a reason why. I don't know, we, um, something I'd like to discuss in the future, I guess. Um, uh, okay, P, okay, and P C T days. I think I'm, I am, I'm really, um, I'm excited about how much it has grown, but at the same time, this weekend was a disaster. I'm sorry. If there would have been a fire at school, there's absolutely zero way that the fire apparatus would have been able to get through to put a fire out. There was parking on both sides of the road, you couldn't, I mean, it was one car. We have, uh, pictures, we all took pictures. One car could only go at a time, there's absolutely no way a fire apparatus could have gone there. I feel like we should really push back on the port and, uh, have them come. I know it's not their, I know it's not their event, but they rent the facility, they rent the property out, they rent everything out to the person who does it. And I think that there should be some pushback on doing something different for parking. I don't know if it's parking them out at the industrial park and shuttling them into town so that, I mean, but every, the, the cemetery was full, the school was full, the side on Gorgeous Beers was full, my road was full, I mean, in like a T. I mean, they were parking up, uh, in front of Bernard's, they were parking in front of, I mean, they were just parking, there was just parking everywhere. And it wasn't so much of a problem down on those roads because they can park off at the side, but down regulator, which has always been an issue, which hopefully has been taken care of now by the red, uh, curb. What, uh, but it was just, everything was packed. And I, I really think we as a council should give some feedback to the port and say, hey, this, this has become really, really big. I mean, if we, you need to help make it, uh, feasible for the people that live here. So I would like to see us address that in, um, I don't know, probably not tonight, but I would like to see us somehow address that. Also, um, do we get T L T on the campers? Because we are supposed to be able to.
We're supposed to, yes.
But do we?
I couldn't tell you, I'd have to check.
Okay, so that could be another issue.
And you know, I, do they charge them?
They don't charge them.
I think, I think, I think they actually charge them for their tent space.
Okay, well, that's, we should push back on it because we can get, we can get money for some of the grief that they're causing. I don't, I don't know, but we should be, we should be, um, making income on it because I mean, it, it doesn't do anything, it doesn't do anything for the city except for bringing people here. And I, it does things for some of the businesses, I, I get that, but this, this weekend, I mean, it was, it was, it was.
I, I will say that comment I've heard from just about everybody. Um, and yes, it's great that that event has exploded, but the city is, I mean, it's surpassed our infrastructure. Um, obviously, that's, that's a slow process, but I, I will be having a meeting with a, a G M, director, whatever his title is, Blue. And we're gonna talk about that and coordinate in the future.
So, yeah, I appreciated those two subjects would be brought up that, that, that person needs to be charging the D L T, we need to be getting that income.
Yeah.
And parking was just ferocious. I mean, there was just not, there was just not a place and it affects me because I live downtown and I, it just was, it was a lot.
Yep.
Um, let's see. Oh, and then I, I got a, an email which I, um, forwarded to, uh, a, uh, city administrator and the mayor about the, uh, and I see we're trying something a little bit different with the owl system, but, uh, are we, we keep talking about improving the system with the port. Are we making any progress on that?
This, the, again, I wanna speak for the port, but I think we're both a little hesitant to put significant money into a system when we're both on the hopefully horizon of any facility. Uh, when that's gonna happen, I don't know, but we're, we're a little weary on that, but.
Can the new system not transport to the new facility? I mean, I mean, cause it's not gonna happen overnight, it's gonna be a long, it's gonna be a long process.
Oh, yeah.
Before we get there, so it would be nice to have something in place that would, I mean, cause the person complain about it waddling back and forth. I mean, sometimes if you're watching, it flips back and forth between two cameras and it gets, gets dizzy. It gets seasick.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that meeting with the sheriff was the worst I've seen, it was really bad.
Yeah, so, okay, so as we're, uh, yeah, maybe I was making progress on that. Okay, and that's all.
That's all. Uh, Eric?
Um, so I was having incredible struggles going back and forward on the agenda and going through the P D F and up and down. Um, some of the other agendas that I look at, uh, for other cities have links on the P D F. Um, so like, they, it, it'll take you to that page. So like I can click on ordinance four, six, three, and article one, and it will take me to that page in the P D F package. I don't know how to do it, I just know it's possible. Um, I, I understand and I hear the feedback about parking, um, for P C T days. But when I listen to business owners talk about how P C T days gets them through the winter and not having to close and not having to open up another new business because you can't get through the winter. Um, I feel like that heartache and that suffering of a couple of days, yes, it's a pain, I, I, I will, I won't argue that it's a pain. Like that I wanted to go down there and hang out and, and go on the sternum bill or and represent the city and be there for people, but I had to ride my bike because there was nowhere to park. I mean, so, yes, I get it, I understand that, but we need to understand that this has insane economic impacts on our city. Huge. One business had a record day and then doubled that record day the next day. One business make enough revenue to last them from January and February, the equivalency of two months of revenue. Like, yes, it sucks, I'm with you, but it's important to have that kind of economic activity because it brings future economic activity as well for those people returning. Um, I advocate and will advocate and always will advocate for every single citizen in this, well, sorry, every single resident within this city. Whether they fall in the L B G D Q line that this council denied, whether they are a member of any sort of group that is discriminated against, that this council has denied, whether it is against the treatment of women and the equality of women within our society. And now you, a gentleman had, this council has said that those actions are okay. That his actions towards my wife of saying that she is not a person is not okay. These groups are discriminated against on a daily basis. I can't believe four women discriminated against themselves by nominating this gentleman that says that my wife has no choices to make in her household. She isn't equal in my life. There's no one better. We co-run our house. I do not make decisions without her, she makes decision, she does not make decisions without me. We are together in this, we are equals. And to be told that I'm a horrible person for supporting and, and raising up the equality of women in our society, I can't be a part of a council that discriminates and dis- degrades the members of our community. When are you going to stand up and say, I support you? I support you. That's all.
Thank you.
Hurry up. Nothing to speak.
Um, I wasn't here this weekend, but I did take a drive on Friday. Uh, yeah, and Friday was a madhouse, um, and, um, you know, and I did that drive. I actually went up regulator because I wanted to see about, and I don't live over there, I don't see it. Um, but I wanted to go look at it and so I had to drive all through downtown and then I'm driving the wrong way through elementary school and that, that went wrong. And thankfully, I got all the way up to Wana Pah before car turned in, so I don't know how I made it through there. Um, did the field totally fill up with cars?
No, no, it wasn't full. It wasn't helpful.
Uh, you know, for years, I, I, I was the director of transportation at the ski resort. We had to manage an influx of a thousand people in a couple of ninety minutes, you know, up and down, right? So parking optimization was something that was really kind of in my heart. So when I look around, I see empty parking spots in town, um, and congestion in other areas, I feel like it's mismanaged. And so I definitely agree with the sentiments as far as going back to the port and talk to the event organizer and putting a little bit more on them. Um, as a director of transportation at the ski resort, we also provide transportation to the same event organizer for other events they run because they don't have adequate parking facilities and so they have to bus people to race start, for example. Um, but I did see some empty parking spots in town that I thought like could have been utilized. Uh, and I agree that maybe. Uh, and I agree that maybe there's parking outside of town and we can then shuttle people over. Uh, I think that as every year people come and they have a good time and they tell other people, it just goes, and it keep getting bigger. So it's good to have these conversations and I'm amazed to hear the, uh, the numbers that I, I hadn't heard as far as the, uh, the real sales numbers of the business in town. Uh, but, uh, my participation, uh, I volunteered at Thunder Island, uh, bag checking. It was just, it's so fun talking to these people from all over the world that come here, you know, and it's just, it's really inspiring, uh, you know, talking to some of these too many. So it's cool that they, uh, they want to come and celebrate here in our hometown. Um,
Oh, just Amanda Ferguson, uh, I just want to comment that every interaction we have with her, I am just continually impressed and um, her ability to speak to a specific language in those documents as we're going through those really just shows kind of the rationale behind all of it, which, you know, like the elevation diagram, like trying to build an understanding, comprehend that. Um, I just, I feel like we really scored, uh, working with her on strategic plan. Uh, and now the, uh, the code revisions down on visualization, she's been a great partner. So, um, I'm really glad that we've gone through all of these processes and I can see the benefit to our community and I should reflect in this agenda tonight. And that's all I got to say.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'm going to give you guys a real quick review of some of the things I've been doing. I have met with the port on our, we have a regular, uh, monthly meeting uh, with the port and that includes, uh, Blue and uh, sometimes Brad Lorang is in that meeting. Um, I did have a special meeting with Jeremiah Blue over, uh, PCT days because I wanted to know if they had a debriefing. Cause I felt like it was really important for us to have a voice in that. Um, they do have a debriefing on it in two weeks, but that is with their staff and no one is there. In about two months, they'll have a debriefing with the vendor. And that's where he comes in and says, how many attended with again and all that. And I spoke with Jeremiah about more bathrooms being on, uh, Wannapaw for even if there's a couple of foot and overlooked park during this weekend. And he said that wouldn't be a problem. They have too many down at the park, so that would be something that is accommodated. Um, they had several issues too. So as it gets closer and stuff, um, I also talked to him about some extra policing on that weekend for our downtown because I got a lot of complaints about drunkenness going down the streets and stuff and women needing to get to their tents and things like that. So I heard all kinds of complaints. I wasn't here. I was actually in Baker City doing the Oregon Mayors Association Conference. And I would love to give you guys a real good briefing on that, but I have not had time because of everything else to get that ready, but I did learn a lot. And I am excited to share it with all of you guys. Um, the other thing, um, I meet with our city administrator every week and, um, today we had our regular meeting on Monday. We usually meet on Wednesdays at nine, but today we met at nine o'clock and we talked about the, um, the NLC, uh, report that we did not file. Uh, there's rumor about how we will have to pay back this COVID money of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, I talked with Jaclyn and Peggy from the different entities about this. The portal, uh, once I clarified with Jackie why she said August twenty-sixth, it was her understanding that the portal was open until then. However, it had been closed. So she rechecked into it. And in the meantime, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Bennett and our finance director, Shantae, about this issue and, um, and Shantae is working on it. Um, and we will be trying to get into the treasury portal. Hopefully they will open it. My understanding is they will open it again after August twenty-sixth. And when that opportunity happens, we need to be able to get into that portal and we need to be able to do our reports by mid-September or we will pay that two fifty-seven, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars back. So that, that is top priority for Mr. Bennett and Shantae. Um, so that was our big Monday morning thing, um, just so we get all, everybody's on the same page with that. So any rumors you made here or whatever, you guys can say, no, we don't have to pay it back. We're working on it and hopefully we'll know something by the weekend, the, by the end of the week, whether that is or not. Um, because Jaclyn from there did send an email saying that they are going to be opening that back up. So otherwise we would be stuck paying that back. Um, I also want to, um, commend Baker City on the cute little town they have. I don't know if anybody's ever spent any time there. It's the cutest little town. They have all these historical buildings and everything. And they have such a pride in their town. And it shows and the people are really nice and welcoming and all of that. So it was a very exciting event and I got to meet a lot of mayors from a lot of cities. And we got to network and get feedback and all of that. So, um, really grateful for that. And I also want to say, I don't hear enough praise for our council about the House bill win of five zero zero six. That is a big win, council. And we should be celebrating because that is one point six million dollars that our community does not have to pay. And that is a huge win. And we need to be spreading the word because that's exciting. Um, also I said earlier about we have one opening on budget, one on planning and one on tourism. I also have asked city administrator Derek has offered to give anybody a tour of our electrical lines and stuff that wants it. I asked, uh, city administrator to sign me up for that tour. If anybody else is interested in that tour where we don't get a quorum, I would like to you guys to do it. So Derek's not taking his time to do it multiple times. So please get on that list with the city administrator so we can do that. Did you have some?
No, I just agree with you. Yeah, that's Courtney.
And then, uh, the small city allotment grant, we did get that. And in the spring, uh, just so you can let citizens know, the streaks that will be done is Ventura, Wheeler and Sunset. And then we'll all start in the spring. And then City Yard Debris Day is this Thursday from twelve to three thirty. So bring your yard debris. And I just want to give a big thank you to council because without all of our hard work and commitment to our community, none of this would be happening. And then the bathroom. We have to talk about the bathroom. The graffiti and the vandalism has cut down by ninety percent. I would easily say that probably, easily. However, we need to start servicing our bathrooms more often. By the time I went there last night to the bathrooms, a gentleman was standing there and told me that the bathrooms were closed and I said, well, why is that? Well, he was warning me not to go in because it was so terrible. So our public works guys had to walk into a lot of crap literally this morning. And it was horrible. So I would like for us, um, to talk about it, maybe next meeting or something, what we're going to do about our bathrooms. Cause we have a responsibility to our community and to the tourists to take care of it. Cause this is the first thing people see when they come to our town is the bathrooms. So, and that is all I have. So, um,
Eric, can I add that one thing I, I would, I missed?
What's that? Yes, go ahead.
I, I wanted to make a comment on PCT days. That's the other thing I, I was hoping to make a comment on.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I, I sympathize with the parking challenges that were clear and, you know, very disruptive. Uh, having said that, I don't think the one council member was saying we, we don't do PCT days. I, I think they just want a better managed event and I support that. Uh, we, we need our, our fire lanes clear so all our EMS can get where they need to go should an incident happen. But on the other hand, we also need to encourage this event. Uh, this, the data is undeniable. Uh, I spent, you know, several hours down in the park. It was incredible. The energy was fabulous. We had that nice rain. It was a spectacular weekend and, uh, I hope this, uh, community will embrace it and it'll continue to help businesses thrive in Cascade Locks. That's why we do events like this and promote them. And I know it makes a difference to the guys who owns businesses here and I care deeply about their success. So I, I'd like to think we can find a middle ground to manage the, the impacts while not, you know, uh, spoiling the benefits, uh, of this, these types of events. So I just want to make that, that comment from my chair. And the last thing, uh, I do love the idea of a, uh, a link PDF. Uh, I think that's a great idea from Keller and I would hope, uh, staff can figure out how to do that. Because I too, these, these packets are so darn long. And you guys know, I bring my laptop and I like to just be able to, you know, skip down exactly where I need to be. And it's a lot of scrolling. It could be much more efficient. I, I, I too have seen it worked. I think that's a small change that we can improve on our, our, our efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, whenever I talked to Jeremiah Blue about PCT days, it was about making everybody a little bit more comfortable. It's not about getting rid of it because it is a major drive for our businesses. I've had a business and that was my biggest weekend. It carried me through the winter and our businesses needed. And the other fact is that the city or the port has to pay zero dollars to put this event on. So we get all the revenue for zero out of our pockets or out of the port. So.
And I just want to say I am not against PCT days. I am just, we, it just has to be managed better. I mean, we just, the parking, there's other options for parking and, uh, I mean, and the cahooting at two o'clock in the morning. Also, um, I didn't know if you wanted to mention the small towns meeting in Hook River next.
Oh, on September eighteenth.
Yeah, I will see.
The, the LLC is having a meeting on September eighteenth in Hook River and it is free. So good chance to sign up for, and I forget what it's on. As, oh, yeah, I forget the top, what the topic is, what the workshop is.
You don't, you don't know until you show up.
Okay.
Yeah. Sometimes, sometimes it's in advance, sometimes you don't know until you show up.
Okay. And then real quick, Mr. Bennett, can you put me down for the electric tour, please?
Me too.
Yeah.
I'd like information of, of like, when is it when and where we're meeting?
Well, we don't know and we're trying to put it together so we don't have them playing against.
Okay.
Yeah, so it sounds like we have two separate tours.
Tours, yes.
Two tours.
Yeah, that's fine. Just, I think it's really instrumental for us to go out and get eyes on it. So, all right, I am going to.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question?
Yeah.
Comments? Uh, so just on the, um, the ARBA funds and the reporting, the, forgive me, there might have been other communities I haven't seen yet. So there's clarification that, that portal will reopen tomorrow and be open through the middle of September?
We're hoping that it reopens the day after tomorrow. And we don't know which one will begin because the treasury is grouping in these uh, cities that are left into categories. So we don't know if we'll get in on the first opening or not. That's how I took it. You got that email too from Jaclyn?
This is the first I'm hearing of this.
The last I heard was, deadline was tomorrow, so.
Yeah, well, that deadline, she was wrong because she didn't realize they were closing the port, the portal. That's the problem is the US Treasury has closed the portal. So if they do not open this portal back up, then we owe the money. Because we missed the deadline. We have many emails that said, hey, the portal's opening and all of that. Shantae asked a really good question. She was like, how come we didn't know? Well, when Mr. Zimmerman left, instead of forwarding his email into Jordan's mailbox, he, Jordan, correct me if I'm wrong. He had Mr. Zimmerman's email login, but he has not checked it, correct?
It was, it was a separate inbox from I made one and I checked it pretty religiously for a year, year and a half, but after I stopped getting things, I stopped checking it. But then they eventually started rescinding things, so.
So, yeah. So the breakdown in the communication and the ma, fact of the matter is, is we didn't get our report done. So I'm hopeful and praying that they open the portal. Otherwise we probably have mine. And that's not good.
I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session.
I'm going to make, uh, recess the regular session first and then.
You, you need to make a motion to go.
Yeah.
Go to, uh, ORS one nine two point six six zero two A from forming a specific public officers, employees and agents under limited circumstances.
Kathy, did we do that now?
No, I'm just saying you don't have to make a motion to go into it.
Oh, okay.
I mean, recess regular session.
Move into executive session.
Saying that, that leaves the regular session over for you to go back into.
Okay.
To discuss anything you want to learn.
Okay. And do we have the recording done? Uh, once we're officially in executive session. Okay, so, so we're just, we don't have that. No, just recess, say.
Sorry, we're going to get this done in twenty minutes.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, this one should be pretty. Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Man, we got it done too, but I was worried. That was a long agenda. Thank you guys. Thanks, sir.
Does this connect to you then? Was this just something from my lawsuit I looked at?
Um, so they're going to pull this.
Yeah, so you, yeah, that's the lawsuit stuff. So you can read that there.
Right.
Preferably.
I did read it, so.
Got to get it back.
Yeah, that's right.
You guys want to take HPs or?
Did you have any questions on this?
No.
I mean, we have a, a storm drain booking in the sixties that never had to be, never made.
Barbie, did I have a box in here, right?
No.
I'm like, I see.
I have a box.
Yeah.
Yeah, didn't you just say you pulled this from your box?
Oh, I, I thought you meant like a package box. I have, I have a mail slot, my mail slot, the one I checked and that's why it's empty.
All the ordinance is passed, right Kathy?
No, the first one needs to separate. Uh, four, six, three.
I did sign, thank you. So I signed all of them, but that one before I asked. We'll go to the night.
You send those letters, make those.
Yes.
You don't have her sign the reservation.
Because they're going to change.
And you can get one and a half percent of the territory we have on each of those.
Yeah.
But I got about four dollars a night on the island. Was through with third party. So you have to get a hold of them.
Yeah, he has, he has charged it and they, we, the board has to do one that, the impetus, the impetus is the impetus to get it happen. Cause it's the port who rents it all the facilities out.
So fifteen, twenty, thirty, yeah.
Correct, right?
There's the letters at.
What letter?
On letters.
Oh, for the grant organizations.
I got the state of Minnesota.
I don't think they saw that.
You start to look up.
Did we start?
Yes.